Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome. This is the November 12th, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order. As always, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Ettinger, can you take the roll call, please?
Eric Brooks.
Here.
Natalie Gren.
Here.
Thomas Harlan.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. And, Mrs. Ettinger, can you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are going to move right into our report by our student representatives tonight. And tonight, we welcome Marissa Roddy and Ethan Daly to report on the activities and events at North High School.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Ethan Daly. I'm a senior at Waukesha North.
And my name is Marissa Roddy, and I'm also a senior at Waukesha North.
All right, so our Homecoming Week is a pretty big event around Waukesha North. We do a bunch of hallway decorating. We announce Homecoming King and Homecoming Queen. There's a lot of anticipation always around the football game, and people are always excited for this time of year.
Yep, and this year, our theme was beach, so it was fun to see all the different decorations throughout the hallways this year. And then, next up, we have Key Club. So, Key Club is the biggest club at North. Actually, we reached 127 members this year, which is very exciting. And so here, we have a couple of the different groups that went out trick-or-treating around the neighborhoods. And we were actually on the news because of it, and we also were with the food pantry. And we ended up collecting about one ton of food, so it was a lot.
So volunteering at Lowell, it brings us a lot of great community connections. I know the avid kids and the marketing students really like it, because then it gets you into a different environment, and then you get to have these relationships with the future generation of Waukesha community. And then, these kids will later on go into the high school, and you can really start instilling good values in them and just teaching them how to be a North student. So, our avid students participated in fall-themed activities. So, we did a Veterans Day card. The marketing students also did a fall activity where they painted pumpkins. And you could just see the smile on the kids' faces every time you walk in there. A lot of kids remember your name, they come running up to you. They just can't wait to just come and be your friend. And it really brings us a lot of positive and joy.
And then, next up, we actually have another one of our Key Club events. So, this is the Fall Yard Cleanup. We partner with the Senior Eras, and we go out to about 12 different houses. Depending on the year, this year, we only ended up having nine, but there were still a lot of kids that were very excited to sign up. And we, actually, the day before this time, baked cookies for all the seniors in their homes. And it was very fun. And then, next up, we have our Marching Band. So, they took third place at State, and they actually hosted one of their events at Carroll University, just down the street from us. And their theme this year, I believe, was construction. So, it was about how life can get in your way sometimes and how you have to work around it. And then, next up, we also have the Blood Drive. So, this is put on through Student Council. And this year, we had quite a few participants, although it was the day of a football game, so we lost some of the football players, but we still were able to collect a lot of blood that day.
All right, so our Conference Sportsmanship Award. I think this is our second year winning this. And this is pretty big for us as a school, because it really shows that we care about, even if you are the opponent, always willing to lend a helping hand and pick them up off the ground. And when we win, we win in class, and it just shows character and how we develop athletes at Waukesha North. So, athletic achievements, as you can see, the boys' soccer team decided to make a big run this year. Waukesha Girls Golf going to state, and we had some state qualifier swimmers. As a personal achievement, this year in football, I won first female conference tight end. We had a first female conference receiver. We had a first female conference offensive tackle and D-end. So, overall, this was a big year for Waukesha North athletics and really leaving a stamp in the community and driving back some support.
And then, next up, back to our arts department, we have the Fall Concert. So, this was the band, and then also the choirs. They were all a bunch of fun, different themes. So, the choir was actually, we had a bunch of different musical songs or just fall or spooky songs, because it was our spooky soiree.
So, we just found out that we're exceeding the state report card expectations. And it honestly comes to no surprise with the amount of kids that we have taking AP honors, because I feel like it's always a constant competition that even I get in with my buddies. It's like, we all want to be in the same hard class, and we all want to get the A. And it's like this constant culture of building up and getting better. And I think that culture really builds students. And as of three days ago, I just got my confirmation that I'm going to go to a candidate visit for the Naval Academy, fly out tomorrow at 4:30 a.m., so, pretty exciting.
And then, next up, we have our upcoming events. So, we have our Avid Showcase, which will be Thursday, December 4th, which is where all the avid kids, and we'll have people from all around the Midwest come to North, because we are now a demonstration school. And we'll have student panels and just have different people from around the country, really, come see North and what we're all about. And then, we also have the 8th Grade Open House, which is Thursday, January 8th. And that's when the 8th grade is come get to see North and what we're doing over there. Thank you so much for having us today.
Thank you, guys. Hang on for one sec. There's probably some questions for you. So, any questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Mrs. Koenig.
I just need to tell you, it gets better and better every time you guys come, and every time you share more and more. I mean, the accomplishments just keep mounting. I'm so incredibly proud of both of you, and congratulations on your Naval Academy visit. And you guys are doing great things, so I'm just very proud.
Thank you.
Mrs. Voight?
I'm just really pleased to hear that you collected a ton of food for the trick-or-treat for the food pantry. That's really awesome. Key Club's doing some great things. So, congratulations on all those efforts.
Thank you.
I think it's been really exciting to watch the athletics accomplishments this year. There's been several teams that have kind of been mounting over the last couple of years to success, so congratulations for that as well, and to you, Ethan, in particular, for your accomplishments. And so, we'll hear from you one more time, I think, this year. And I think the report card, as you said, kind of speaks for itself, but just the level of students we've seen enrolled in some of the advanced courses. And there are also some courses where, I understand, North is the place where those sections are being offered. And so, there's some unique opportunities at North that you all are experiencing, too, that comes from you all wanting those challenges. So, congratulations for that. Anything else? Thank you both for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We are now at the section of our meeting where there is an opportunity for citizens to speak. And I have some instructions for tonight that are a little bit different. So, we have 31 speakers tonight. Because we have more than 30 speakers, we have a modification to the time. So, each individual will be limited to two minutes this evening. We will signal the speaker in one and a half minutes to begin to wrap up their comments. I will do my best to announce in advance who is coming next, so that you can prepare. And we, to the extent that we can be respectful of one another and limit the responses, I think we'll get through it pretty quickly. And I, unfortunately, if we get to the two-minute mark, may need to cut some of you off. And so, I apologize in advance for that, but it's in an interest of being fair to everybody. So, please, please help us with that in terms of keeping to the time. So, as always, we expect all speakers to honor our time limit, to refrain from using any inappropriate language, and to be respectful in our comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We'd like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways, and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, and other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used in the area behind the speaker and podium. Will be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones. We also had some feedback at the last meeting that there were side conversations happening in the gallery, so out of respect for all to be able to hear what the speakers are saying, please refrain from some of those additional conversations. We appreciate that. All right. We will start tonight with Kristin Heisley, followed by Eric Jacoby.
Hello. I come here today as a Hawthorne, a Butler, and a North alumni. I'm also a Lowell parent. But I'm not only speaking tonight on behalf of Lowell, I'm speaking on behalf of all of these students. I have two sons at Lowell. One receives special education services, the other one does not. But they both benefit tremendously from the accommodations available. Lowell has one of the highest special education populations in the district, around 30%. But because of that, 100% of those kids benefit. Lowell gives these students opportunities to make miracles happen. When Blair closed five years ago, the families went to Lowell and Hawthorne. And now, these families are getting moved again, because these two schools are being asked to close. These schools represent some of the highest socioeconomic needs in the district. These students need stability the most. These schools, they're their kids' second homes. It's their sanctuary. It's their safe place. It's not just the people, it's the building. When you relocate them again, you're taking away their security, their comfort, and you are failing them. There are many soundproof rooms in the building at Lowell. A few years ago, administration looked into moving one of those buildings to White Rock. This request was denied due to the cost. So, now, why are we saying if we can move these rooms is at a reasonable cost, when your request got turned down a couple of years ago? If the goal of optimizing our future is to save money, why are you closing a school that fully funded a $200,000 playground last year, has a recently updated gym, library, hardwired technology, and these soundproof rooms? Just please make a decision that makes sense. Closing Lowell does not make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Next up is Eric Jacoby, followed by Aubrey Jacoby.
Good evening. I'm a parent at Bethesda Elementary. I stand before you because the proposed closure of Bethesda Elementary is not just a decision, it's a disruption to trust, community, and the future of our children. Let's start with the shifting rationale. Every time we ask, "Why Bethesda?", the answer changes. That's not transparency. That's moving the goalposts. Either the original analysis was flawed, or the district is not being forthright. If leadership cannot give one clear, consistent reason, how can this community trust this process? Next is safety. As a certified facility locksmith, I know Bethesda is secure. The locks work. The building meets standards. And let's be honest, internal locking systems, like the doors inside the building, are debated nationwide, because locking people inside during a crisis creates its own new set of challenges. Using safety as a jurisdiction here is misleading. It's a scare tactic, not a solution. Bethesda isn't just a building, it's the heart of a thriving dual-language program. This program creates a unique culture of bilingualism and cross-cultural understanding.
30 seconds.
It's not just about learning two languages, it's about building bridges, fostering global citizenship, and preparing students for an interconnected world. That culture cannot simply be uprooted and transplanted without losing its essence. Closing Bethesda risks dismantling something truly special. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Aubrey Jacoby, followed by Helen Bishara.
Hello, my name's Aubrey. I am in second grade at Bethesda Elementary. My family moved here almost five years ago because they loved Bethesda. I'm so glad they did. I have made so many friends, and all the teachers are so helpful. I still give my old teachers hugs and say hi when I see them. I love my school because I feel safe when we have drills to keep us safe. I trust my teachers. There has never been a time I didn't feel safe. I also love our playground. In winter, they put salt down, so it's not slippery. Thank you for listening, and just like we say every day at Bethesda, you have the power to make it a great day.
Thank you, Aubrey. Next speaker is Helen Bishara, followed by Maria Hawkins.
Good evening. On October 20th, I filed a formal equity complaint with the district administration and CC'd it to all of you on the board. The complaint is now under official investigation, and a resolution meeting is currently being scheduled, where I'll present the full supporting evidence. Yesterday, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction released the 2024 through 2025 school year report card data. Using that updated data, I calculated a disparity index of 2.18 for Hispanic and Latino students at Hawthorne Elementary. That means these students are represented among those impacted at more than twice the share of the district population. We see this pattern before. When Blair Elementary closed in 2019, its disparity index for Hispanic and Latino students was 2.9. Many of the same families who experienced that disruption now have younger children at Hawthorne and Lowell, and several of the same teachers still serve this community. Closing these schools now would mark a second major disruption to the same group of families and staff within just a decade. The data indicates that a recommended proposal would disproportionately impact both Hispanic and Latino students and students with disabilities, groups that are both protected under Title 11 of the Civil Rights Act, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, and Wisconsin's Pupil Nondiscrimination Statute.
30 seconds.
Proceeding without addressing these findings would place the district at risk of noncompliance with these laws. I believe we all share the same goal, to protect students, ensure fairness, and make decisions that stand the test of time. Let the data, the process, and the law guide the decision.
Thank you. The next speaker is Maria Hawkins, followed by Harper Kraus.
Gracias por su tiempo. Soy la doctora Hawkins, madre de un estudiante aquí en SW. Cada vez que tenemos una reunión, una sesión para escucharnos, un taller o una reunión de la junta, salimos con más preguntas y respuestas, queridas respuestas, porque con frecuencia se nos proporciona información contradictoria y confusa. Muchas de nuestras inquietudes sencillamente no han sido atendidas. Y los propios datos de SW no justifican el cierre de Hawthorne. Por ejemplo, en caso de que Hawthorne cierre, se nos ha dicho que los estudiantes serían trasladados a otras escuelas de Título I. Sin embargo, al revisar los datos hemos comprobado que eso no sería cierto para muchos de ellos. 60% de los estudiantes en Hawthorne son económicamente desfavorecidos. En un taller reciente alguien comentó que el inglés es el idioma nativo de los Estados Unidos. No solo es una afirmación completamente falsa, sino que me permito recordar a la junta que ustedes representan a la educación, y esperamos que defienden los fundamentales de esta conyva. El inglés no es el idioma nativo de este país, y ni siquiera fue declarado idioma oficial de los Estados Unidos hasta este año. No obstante, ese comentario ofrece una oportunidad de aprendizaje más sobre los idiomas indígenas de las Americas. Casangi chichu, niaska pagarachu. Niukanchi summa kya chana wasita charangi chi. Ndi niukanchi summa guyucha charangi chi.
30 seconds.
Oakechabi shinji iya kunasta yanunau n tianun imus kunun. China hyara mana datayuk charangi chi chupi ayuata ashanuchu. Ichiguna supta anun paguna manjaskta watta yarinai aska pagarachu.
The next speaker is Harper Kraus, followed by Amber Kraus.
Hi, my name is Harper Kraus, and I went to Bethesda Elementary. But now, I attend Butler Middle School. I want to tell you that our open concept was never a safety or noise concern. It offered flexibility for us to move around the comfort of knowing other teachers and classmates in your grade, and for teachers to redesign classroom spaces based on their needs. Although I wasn't in the dual-language program, the exposure of the culture and hearing Spanish had a positive impact on me. We learned about Spanish heritage during Hispanic Month. In fifth grade, we got paired with younger dual-language students for Buddy Day. Our daily announcements were in both English and then in Spanish. Every day, we said the pledge. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jura sin de edad, a la nera, en el estado de América. Ya la República de la Santa, una nación pavorios, indivisible, con edad, en el C C partitous. I maybe didn't say it 100% correctly, but I think it is amazing that I wasn't taught it, but picked it up through exposure. I'm now taking Spanish as one of my electives in middle school and have a great starting foundation. Bethesda is an amazing school. Thank you for listening. Once a bobcat, always a bobcat. Thank you.
Thank you, Harper. The next speaker is Amber Kraus, followed by Melissa Toledo.
Hello. A dual-language site cannot simply be moved elsewhere without a serious negative impact. As you've heard previously from Mr. Pat, it takes years to build and embrace the culture of a multilingual school. Our dual-language teachers are essential, but so are our monolingual teachers, who support and celebrate this program every day. They embrace bilingual assemblies, pledge of allegiance in two languages, like you just heard my daughter say, and ensure that every sign, every communication reflects our commitment to diversity and inclusion. Bethesda has the second-largest capacity of elementary schools on the west side of town, offering incredible flexibility with four sections per grade level. For some who have not been to our school, see this as a disadvantage due to our lack of walls, all of the staff would tell you that in reality, it's an advantage. It has allowed flexibility with larger classes. For example, in our third-grade dual- and mono classes this year, they're much larger, and they've been able to expand into other classes for small groups, have consistency with grade-level activities instead of segmenting, and increase collaboration and relationships between the staff and the students. Dr. Seibert and the rest of the cabinet acknowledge that the culture has been built around Bethesda's layout, and that is why one of the proposed options is to spend nothing on additional walls. And if a lack of walls was truly such a safety concern, why, over the years, were the ones we had slowly removed by the district? To me, the safety of something that is experienced daily, such as pickup and drop-off, especially with the number of students that walk, is of greater significance and concern. Bethesda's pickup and drop-off system is safe and efficient with multiple areas that keep traffic flowing and children protected. This is not something easily replicated or fixable elsewhere. Bethesda is a model of choice, flexibility, safety, and academic and cultural excellence. I urge you to keep Bethesda open, not just for my family, but for the hundreds of families who choose Bethesda as their number-one choice of school across Waukesha.
Your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Toledo, followed by Madison Gonzalez.
Hello, everyone. Melissa Toledo again. Sorry, it's been a long summer. All right. So, the focuses seem to have shifted from, let's focus on what we do well and make it even better, to how much money can we save, no matter the possible disruption or negative impact it can make on valuable programs and students. So, here are a few things to point out that I've hinted in the long, long email I sent you a couple hours ago, so I'm sure you haven't had time to read it, but here's just some of the highlights. Safety concern: People would not be citing Bethesda as unsafe or using it against us if it was never stated by a district administrator. This is just the fact. This incorrectly worded info has caused many to spread misinformation about our school. I hope the district will come out with a statement correcting this. Moving families: There are three dual-language families that I know of that have left Bethesda and/or moved ahead of this school year because of how this was approached. So, we already are losing students because of just the announcement of how this was handled. Bethesda: As someone else mentioned, report cards are out. We got a 76.4, which makes us the highest-performing school by a large margin within a two-mile radius of our school. We are a high-performing school. Why take that away? Our community: Its thriving and impactful dual-language program is one that can actually house more dual-language students. We have inclusivity for all special education. We're ADA compliant, dedicated special education rooms, sensory rooms, and one of the few occupational therapy rooms that are in the district. Also, overall...
30 seconds.
Oh, man, that was fast. Okay, pretty much, plus one to everything everyone's been saying. I think for me, it's the dual-language program. That, you might say, can be picked up and lifted, but it cannot. Those rooms are laid out in a way to really promote the amazing culture and the amazing community that we have for dual-language, and you can see it through the data, choice-in, and how well we are performing. So, please, really take to heart all of the information I sent via email. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Madison Gonzalez, followed by Antonia Schmidt.
Hi, everyone. I have been and spoken at every board meeting since oof, as I call it, was presented, and have attended multiple input sessions and our most recent community session. And I honestly don't feel like wasting anyone's time by restating what I've said consistently about our school and how much we love our community there. Instead, I am just going to simply list the facts and the logical reasons as to why I think Bethesda would make sense for the district to stay open. Safety and noise has never been an issue at Bethesda, and it's never even been brought up in conversations before oof. Even when it comes to sped, our students have no problem with our layout. In fact, we believe that it's our biggest asset. It benefits both the students and teachers. We are able to combine classrooms and openly collaborate with lesson plans and activities. That's why I love talking with Dr. Seibert about his experience subbing for one of our kindergarten teachers and the joy he said he had with the kids that day, noticing that there was no noise issues anywhere in the school. Bethesda also has one of the highest capacities in the district and can hold four full sections per grade, which makes it an opportune location for which makes it an opportune location for capacity flexibility in the future. I believe that as a result of our dedicated teachers and staff, our parent volunteers, our classroom collaboration, and our very hardworking kids, this is why our DPI school report card went from a 70.7 from last year to a 76.4 this year and continues to rise. I also want to highlight our dual language program and how difficult and unnecessary it would be to move that amount of students
30 seconds.
to a school that's never implemented that service before. I believe picking up dual language at Bethesda and moving it to another building will jeopardize that service and leave families feeling contradicted about staying in the district. We have a large number of students that transfer into our school because of programs like dual language. And we have been a dual language school for 13 years and we continue to keep that legacy going. I will say I was very happy that some of you took the time to come visit us during our school sessions to look at what we have to offer students in the district and hopefully...
Your time has ended.
Thank you.
Next to Antonia Schmidt, followed by Susan Minges.
Following the last board workshop, I felt it was important to bring to light some crucial aspects that keep getting overshadowed with the ongoing discussion of potential closure of Bethesda. First and foremost, I wanted to highlight an important point, and that is being that Bethesda consistently ranks as the number one choice in school for families throughout Waukesha. This is a significant achievement and something that seems to be overlooked during these conversations continuously. We proudly serve 152 students throughout open enrollment and choice program, which highlights the demand and preference for what Bethesda offers. Beyond just our dual language program, when we are talking about bettering our school district and the lower birth rates, why would you get rid of the one thing that is bringing people to your district? Moving on to dual language program, this has been connected to Bethesda for the past 13 years. This program is deeply woven into our school's culture and relocating it is not as seamless as it may sound. It would not only disrupt stability of it, but it would jeopardize the vital relationships we have made among our staff and trust we've built within our community. We understand that curriculum can be transferred, but a unique environment and community we've built together over the past 13 years simply cannot. Another key point I want to bring up is that Bethesda stands as the fourth largest elementary school in our district and the second largest on the west side. Our school can comfortably accommodate four classes at each grade level. This is something that cannot be done at other schools. This capacity is crucial as we anticipate these closures. It'll allow us to keep cohorts together and effectively absorb students from other sites without becoming overwhelming.
30 seconds.
Our infrastructure supports seamless and safe operation compared to other locations. Bethesda's traffic flow is organized, quick, and safe and ample for residential parking in a truly walkable neighborhood. My final point I want to point out tonight is safety. It hasn't become a concern until OOF plan was rolled out. Security has always been a priority at Bethesda, and as a parent to two students currently at Bethesda, I feel very comfortable and confident in the safety plans they have for us. At the end of the day, option E will save the district...
Your time has ended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Susan, is it Minges?
Yes.
Followed by Jennifer Clem.
I'm a parent and grandparent living in the 53186 area code in the city of Waukesha. I believe that schools, along with family and community, form the foundation that helps children grow into successful and responsible citizens. That's why I care deeply about optimizing our future plans. As a taxpayer, I understand that declining enrollment requires difficult budget decisions, especially in elementary schools. I also speak today as the president of SOFIA, an organization of 13 faith-based communities advocating for social justice. Many of our faith communities are located within the boundaries of Woodier, Lowell, and Hawthorne schools, all schools whose doors may be shuttered. These schools disproportionately serve low-income, disabled, and Hispanic students. From a purely financial standpoint, closing older schools and moving students to newer ones may seem straightforward, but these are often the most vulnerable students and many families lack the resources to manage longer transportation distances. It has also been brought to the attention of SOFIA that while there were many listening sessions and meetings regarding potential school closings, notices, meetings, and materials were initially only available in English. Translation requests were delayed or denied, and when translation was finally offered, the equipment failed, leaving Spanish-speaking parents excluded from much of the process. Given these concerns, SOFIA respectfully asks the school closures be postponed until there have been adequate considerations
30 seconds.
of accessibility, equity, community, and import an alternative such as Plan H. Ideally, an impact study will be done to understand the effects on families, neighborhoods, and students. Thank you for your consideration.
The next speaker is Jennifer Clem, followed by Keri Kumro.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Clem and my son is in third grade at Lowell. Lowell is a great school and has so much to offer. It is the only school that accommodates all the children, including the deaf and hard-of-hearing as well as speech and sensory-sensitive children. While I fully understand services provided for the DHH students can be done in another location, it will be quite costly. Lowell offers everything for these students to be successful, including three sound booths in classrooms, expensive speaker system that is wired into the gym, and the classrooms that sync to the students' hearing devices. My son started coming to Lowell when he was three years old for speech. If it wasn't for Lowell and the speech program, he'd probably still be struggling. The early childhood special education program, along with the DHH program, also has a perfect-sized playground that can accommodate these preschoolers. Also, the K-5 playground was just finished this last year. It's still basically brand-new, costing over $200,000, and it's the only all-accessible playground, so all children can play. The library has also been recently updated, and the gym has also been recently updated with new floors, basketball hoops, along with the speaker system. Also, Lowell is safe for all students already, as we are also accessible to all, as no need for renovations there, which saves money. Lowell is a place where all students can learn, no matter their disability. And also, not to mention the recently updated HVAC system that cost over $4 million. Closing Lowell will not save money in the long run. It will indeed cost more to update these other schools
30 seconds.
to become equivalent to Lowell. Something that Lowell offers that these other schools do not is the unique partnership with the avid students who walk over to Lowell to assist our young learners during their early childhood and development classes at North High School. Lowell can walk to North to see the marching band and to Butler to watch the plays. Our location and connections to North and Butler cannot be replicated. The circumstances of our families are very important when you look at our demographics, specifically the economically disadvantaged population.
Your time has ended.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next up is Keri Kumro, followed by Amanda Snake.
Good evening. My name's Keri Kumro Mihas. I'm here as a teacher tonight because our district is rushing towards school closures. Without the transparency, financial clarity, or community partnership this decision deserves. First, the timeline is far too fast for a change of this magnitude. These proposals will reshape the lives of thousands of children and families, especially our most vulnerable students who rely on stability and consistency. The list of schools keeps changing, yet families have had little time or clear information to understand the plan, process, or consequences. Other districts like Wawa Tosa are taking years to plan responsibly. Slowing down is not resistance, it's responsible stewardship. Second, we still don't know the full financial impact of this plan. Repurposing or consolidating schools is not just moving students. It requires space, infrastructure, transportation, and special education adjustments. When asked at meet and confer about the cost compared to the savings that the board keeps talking about, district leadership literally said, "We don't know." Closing schools without this information is fiscally irresponsible. One board member even said, "We have the staff, we have the curriculum, buildings don't matter." That statement dismisses the deep connection our families and staff have to their neighborhood schools. Finally, I'm deeply concerned by a board member's recent comment that interpreters are unnecessary because English is the native language of the United States. In a district with over half of our school's populations being bilingual and Hispanic, to suggest interpretation is unnecessary is not only insensitive, it is discriminatory. Public schools serve all students. Diversity is not an inconvenience, it's a strength. I urge this board to pause this process until full cost analyses are public, ensure language access for every family, and make decisions grounded in equity, not haste. Our children deserve thoughtful planning, not rushed closures. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amanda Snake, followed by Zoila Martinez.
My daughter is a fourth grader over at Lowell. She loves school. It is hard, sometimes it is hard for her. She has ADHD. We have a plan with the school. They have been great with her, and I have felt nothing but support from them. Lowell has a great community for all the kids who have disabilities and need some extra support. I beg you guys to take some time and think about that. Lowell cannot, some of the amenities that we have at our school cannot be replicated at other schools. There would be a lot of kids that would feel out of place and unsupported. Our playground was fully supported by donors and from hard work from our students and families asking our family and friends for donations. Please do not put that to waste. That was a lot of work we had to do. We did not get support from the school board for that. I ask you to please think of our students, because a lot of them are not from families that... Some of them, that is their safe haven. That's all I have to say.
The next speaker is Zoila Martinez, followed by Dana Kuhn.
First of all, I'd like to begin by thanking all of you board members for the work you've done so far and giving us the opportunity to be here tonight to speak and be heard. I debated how I wanted to share my message this evening. Should I speak in Spanish, so that most of affected by this plan could feel included? But then again, most of you wouldn't understand me. Should I speak a Native American language? Then maybe only one person would understand me here. And if I didn't choose English, I can almost hear my mother's voice telling me... Everyone here has one problem with optimizing our future plan. I have two. My biggest concern is how the board continues to dismiss the majority of the families who would be most affected if Hawthorne closed. During the last workshop meeting, all the information was presented only in English. As suggested by Mr. Seibert, I tried to turn on the closed caption in Spanish, but that did not work. Later, during the listening session, questions were asked in Spanish, and they were later dismissed. And yet, here we are, moving toward closing Hawthorne while failing to properly inform the majority of the families from this school. I'm not sure if you realize, but we, the Hawthorne parents, are not only unhappy that you want to close our school when there are clearly other options available, as presented back in June. We're mostly unhappy that you want to take a neighborhood school, a school our kids can walk to or bike to. Personally, if it comes down to this, I could accept closing this building only if our children are moved to another school within the neighborhood, not to the other side of town, to a building you once deemed to have safety structure issues. And if you combine two dual-language schools into one, let it not be Lowell. Those kids need their school as well.
Your time has ended.
The next speaker is Dana Kuhn, followed by Renee Messerschmidt.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, administration, and community. I'd like to take this time to address some misconceptions and remind all of us that the decisions being made here tonight aren't just about buildings, they're about what's best for our students. It's heartbreaking that this process has turned into school against school, community against community, and parent against parents. Focusing on what's wrong instead of what's right. Every school in this district has value, and our energy should be going towards recognizing what makes each one of them great, not tearing them down. So tonight I want to focus on what makes Bethesda the common sense choice to me as to remain open. First, Bethesda is the number one choice in school in the district. Families choose Bethesda not because they have to, but because they want to. That speaks volumes about how comfortable, safe, and supported our students and families feel in our open-concept environment. Second, Bethesda has one of the largest capacities in the district, second only to Summit View on the west side of town. This gives us the flexibility and accommodation growth to grow without overcrowding. Our open-concept design allows for collaboration and creative use of our space, something that benefits both students and teachers. Third, our dual-language program is a true success story. Bethesda has proudly been a dual-language school for more than 13 years. We have bilingual teachers, strong leadership, and a culture that celebrates language and diversity. If dual-language students need to move to a new home, Bethesda is ready and equipped to welcome them. Moving that program elsewhere would take years to rebuild what we already have thriving here. Boy, look, that went fast. Bethesda's a safe location in the heart of a neighborhood where families can walk their children to school, something that fosters both safety and community. We're, again, we're the top chosen school. We're safe and flexible for the future. We have thriving dual language. We have a safe, open, and collaborative learning environment, and we have a deeply committed community in our PTO.
Your time has ended.
They are the reason Bethesda deserves to remain open for the good of our students and our district.
Thank you, Dana. The next speaker is Renee Messerschmidt, followed by Elizabeth Nelson.
Good evening. After watching the board's optimization workshop live, I have some concerns. One is the redistrict lines. A large percentage of Hadfield kids live south of Sunset. When admin made these lines, did you consider the type of housing in that area? We're talking multiple-family homes, duplexes, quadplexes, condos, and apartments. With these redistrict lines, Hadfield would lose nearly two-thirds of its current population, and higher cannot absorb that amount of students. Sunset is a hazardous road needing busing. Even if you allow students to be grandfathered into their current school, would that include busing? My guess is not, since we already have a shortage, meaning current Hadfield families south of Sunset would be forced to send their kids to their new assigned school since the overwhelming majority cannot afford to pay for busing and don't have reliable transportation. Once again, you would be uprooting the same community of students you did back in 2022. Hadfield families don't deserve to be impacted by the district again. Please fix the lines, take into consideration the type of housing across Sunset. This feeds into my biggest concern regarding the optimization plans. Your logic for not conducting an impact study is flawed. Nobody is disagreeing that closures need to happen, but many don't agree with how these options are being picked. Why, when we have time and the community is asking for an impact study, does this board not want to bother? You're failing to see how an impact study will make our district admin's jobs easier, bringing more thorough information to this board and the community. Dr. Seibert and his team deserve to have all the tools and information to do their job efficiently, to objectively compare the community needs and balance them fairly.
30 seconds.
So the option they present to the board is as clean-cut as possible, and you're denying that to them. And if what I'm saying is not enough to convince you, then maybe the latest press release from the League of United Latin American Citizens Wisconsin Will claiming optimization proposal disproportionately negatively affects the marginalized, low-income, and Hispanic communities. This is only compounded by board members saying English is America's native language. Our students deserve better. The community may not like the study results, but we will have an easier time accepting it.
Your time has ended.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Nelson, followed by Paul Reese.
Hello. I'm Elizabeth Nelson. I am a parent of a student at Bethesda Elementary, but I think you guys already know that. I'm here tonight to talk about Bethesda, which is the number one choice in two schools in the district with an accountability score of over 76, which exceeds expectations. It's an increase over last year, and in looking at other schools, their DPI scores dropped and in some cases are under 70, which only meets expectations. I want to address the safety concerns of Bethesda. There is no need to do millions of dollars of upgrades to Bethesda Elementary. I believe a lot of you have walked through the school in the last couple weeks. Thank you so much for taking the time to do so. I know Superintendent Seibert was there a couple times in the last couple weeks. I loved your Optimus Prime costume, by the way, at the Halloween parade. That was fantastic. But he also commented on how quiet the school was and how easy the flow for the school worked. Our school is also in a very quiet neighborhood as opposed to on a busy street. I walk my child to school every day and have no concerns doing so. But absolutely what if I had to cross a major, busy Waukesha thoroughfare that has seen several severe and major accidents and even a police chase that ended in front of it last year? Our school also holds four classes for each grade, or can hold four classes for each grade, something that a lot of schools cannot be done. I'm wondering if this has been assessed at other schools, because I don't think it's a possibility. This also includes our amazing dual-language program as well, which serves 154 kids. I want to repeat that number. We have 154 dual-language students at our school. I am blown away at how my son, who isn't even in dual language, has picked up on the Spanish language. It makes me proud, because I'm not the best person to teach him, but 154 doesn't even include our... even include our sped kiddos and our incredible sped teachers. Bethesda serves the greater need for our community. I also want to share that at the end of the day, option E could save the district $2 to $4 million annually in operating costs. While every plan will entail some sort of spending, Bethesda's size, location and bilingual program make it a wise investment for the future of this district. Please stop throwing things at the wall and hoping they will stick to justify closing our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next speaker is Paul Reese, followed by Heidi Drake.
Good evening. You know, the first rule of Fight Club is, you don't talk about Fight Club. So when people say that we haven't talked about safety, that it hasn't been a big deal, it's because you don't talk about it. I've talked about it and I've weighed hard and thought hard about what I was going to talk about, because you don't talk about weaknesses. It's a tactical disadvantage to do it. You just don't talk about those things. So when people say, well, it's never been discussed before, it's because you don't talk about them publicly. They're generally not shared. And it's not not being open, it's just for tactical advantage. You don't talk about those things. So that's why they haven't been talked about. The other thing is, you know, I could be coming here and lately and you hear a lot of I mean, me, mine, you know, this, this, this has a special culture to it, this, that has a special culture to it. No, they don't. It's Waukesha has a special culture to it. We have a lot of great schools here. I've, I've lived here since 1980. I love this, this, this community. It isn't that one school is something special over another. Matter of fact, these schools, these elementary schools we're talking about, they're going to join together in middle school. They're all going to become one in middle school and high school. They're not separate. They are all part of one culture. You're going to have to travel, get this, one mile more probably to, to your new school. That's about it for most. This, this is nothing special about this. People don't understand, something's going to give, something's going to get cut. It's either these or other things. I've made proposals before and talked about things that we can do to save money, shut down the pool at North, put a cell tower at Bethesda. These are things that can save money. Most schools do, most districts do not run three pools. They're lucky if they run one. We run three and we run one of the best ones in the state. So anyways, thanks.
Thank you, Paul. The next speaker is Heidi Drake, followed by Karen Fraley.
Good evening. I'm Heidi Lowell, special education parent. I'm not here to say, don't close Lowell. I mean, don't close Lowell, we, we love it. But every person here is going to say the same thing about their school community. I'm here to speak about the bigger problem, the importance of adaptive technologies and specialized spaces, particularly those at Lowell, and why these features must immediately be incorporated into every school in our district. A student's comfort in their learning environment is just as important as the education itself. As we've expressed, Lowell has specific hearing impaired accessibilities, adaptive sensory rooms and technologies that help students regulate and participate fully in their education. That's not just a feature, that's a lifeline. When we talk about potentially closing Lowell, we're not just talking about relocating students, we're talking about removing the only fully accessible environment that truly meets the needs of some of our most vulnerable learners. If we move forward without adopting these same specialized necessities across all buildings, we risk creating a district where access depends on your zip code, or worse, your diagnosis. That's not inclusion, that's inequity. These adaptive technologies aren't extras, they're equalizers, tools that give every student, regardless of sensory or physical need, the same chance to learn, to focus and to thrive. When students can self-regulate and feel safe in their environment, they engage more, behave better and learn deeper. Teachers regain valuable instructional time, classrooms become calmer, more productive spaces for everyone. Closing Lowell without replicating its accessibility features sends the wrong message, that comfort and dignity of students with sensory and hearing challenges are negotiable. They aren't. If we truly believe in equitable education, then we must prioritize comfort as a core part of learning, not an afterthought. The cost of not doing so is the loss of learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. The next speaker is Karen Fraley, followed by Kim Paget.
Good evening. I'm the parent of dual-language students at Butler and Bethesda and you've all received an email from me listing the reasons why I believe Bethesda should stay open. If you missed the email, I provided you all a copy of it. But what I'd like to talk about tonight is the process for making your decision. You've heard from many community members asking you to conduct an impact study, so that you can have fair, impartial data to base the decision for any potential closures on. I'd like to reiterate that call tonight because without providing clear, public, impartial, comparable data about each school, this process is going to cause further needless division in our district, when what we need to do is come together to make decisions that may be tough, but will hopefully maximize the long-term benefits while minimize the harm to our current students. Right now, it feels very unclear how the board is weighting the different building considerations the administration says are the criteria for deciding which buildings to keep and which to close. We've heard a lot about the cost of adding doors or walls to Bethesda, which to be clear, I do not believe is necessary to keep our school open because I firmly believe that our school is safe or I wouldn't be sending my children there. But if we're going to talk about how much investment different schools need, how much is it going to cost to fix Rose Glenn's well and pipes that are contaminated with lead and copper? How much would it cost to upgrade Bantane Higher Meadowbrook and Rose Glenn's HVAC systems to be on par with Bethesda, Lowell or Hawthorne? What about the schools that were grandfathered into the ADA and aren't accessible? My point is not that any of these should be the single deciding factor to close a particular school, but rather to show that you can cherry pick reasons to argue in favor of closing or keeping pretty much any school in the district. What we don't have is an objective way to compare, an objective way for the board to decide, that doesn't just hinge upon which group of parents complained most recently or the loudest. We need an impact study. An opaque decision-making process benefits none of us. Take the time to conduct an impact study to make sure that if and when we do close schools, whether it's an elementary school in the near term or a high school down the road, that we're doing it in the most fair, considered way possible and not just cutting for cutting sake. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kim Paget, followed by Brandy Conkle.
Good evening and thank you for your time. I'm a parent of two proud Bethesda Bobcats and I'm here to fight for them tonight. Keeping Bethesda open would maintain important geographical balance for the district, particularly for, for the dual-language program. Our building has ample capacity to accommodate students from closed, schools that may close, with room for four sections per grade level and has room to grow as the district's needs evolve. Bethesda's accessible, we have a large parking lot with a well-designed pickup and drop-off system and safe street parking. Many families, including mine, walk to school, avoiding busy streets and traffic, keeping our children safe. Bethesda's accessible, I'm sorry, Bethesda's more than a building, it's a community. We have a strong invested PTO and our families work tirelessly to enrich the school experience through fundraising and volunteerism. Bethesda is safe just as it is, but should there be any costs associated with improvements to our building, please don't underestimate the power of this community. We have the resources, passion and commitment to make Bethesda even better. I want to highlight our dual-language program. When I first moved to Bethesda and learned that they offered the program, I was thrilled. My daughter enrolled and although she later transitioned out to better support her individual learning needs, our family continues to value the tremendous impact this program has on our school. The exposure to Spanish and the rich diversity it brings are true assets to our community. And for 13 years, the dual-language has been an integral part of Bethesda. It's woven into the very fabric of our culture and identity. It's not something that can simply be moved. Its roots run deep and its success depends on the unique environments we've built together. If you haven't had the chance to visit Bethesda during a regular school day, I encourage you to do so. Our open layout may be hard to manage, but it's true, it truly works for us. It's calm, safe and fosters collaboration among teachers and a strong sense of community. Seeing it in action will help you understand just how well it comes together. As a parent who lives just a block away, I'm reminded daily of how lucky we are to have such a wonderful school in our neighborhood. Its closure would be a loss, not just to our family, but to the so many others who have chosen Bethesda as their school. May I remind you that Bethesda's the number one choice in school? So please, don't take away this asset. Bethesda provides an accessible, safe room, education with room to grow and a strong engagement community.
Your time has ended.
Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Brandy Conkle, followed by Erica Kochansky.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brandy Conkle. I have two children, children that attend Bethesda and I'm here to talk to everyone about Bethesda being an opportunity and not an obstacle. To see our building as a blueprint that is not a constraint, but yet a canvas. Bethesda is the top choice in school for a reason. We welcome over 150 students through open enrollment and school choice. Families choose us for not one single feature, but for the entire community we've built. Our community is strong, our dual-language has a 13-year legacy, our roots are robust and established, we build trust, relationships and a culture that is tangible. Bethesda's building offers a dynamic flexibility. We're the fourth-largest elementary school in the district and second on the west side. Our large capacity provides the future flexibility to absorb students and keep groups together as other schools start to consolidate. Our location for, our location and our pickup and drop-off, so Bethesda is situated in a calm and residential area, which naturally promotes the safer and efficient traffic conditions for a school. Our pickup and drop-off process is staffed and designed with safety and efficiency as a priority. Bethesda has the same modern security systems that every school has. We have the monitored entry, door sensors and lockdown doors with the addition of an upgraded HVAC system with CO2 sensors. If additional doors and walls are desired, they can be phased in using savings from the consolidation.
Thirty seconds.
We have a four-section capacity advantage that we see as an asset, that is flexible for our staffing, our future student growth and more importantly, to keep those student cohorts intact. I stand here tonight amongst my own cohorts, the parents of Waukesha. I applaud each one that have risen to the occasion to voice their worries, their doubts and vulnerabilities during the process. It's been remarkable to witness the call to action. This moment calls for vision and we know that you have a lot of difficult decisions in front of you. Once the decision is made, our shared task begins to be won as Waukesha. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Erica Kochansky, followed by Hector Padim.
Good evening. My daughter Rosalie is a 5th grader in the dual-language program at Bethesda. In July, I, along with several others, began emailing district administration and the school board, asking them to pause the OOF process and hire a third party to conduct an impact study prior to making any decisions about school closures, consolidation, sales or repurposing. A few responses I received left much to be desired. On August 15th, after conducting research of my own, I emailed this to district administration and the school board. Quote, "I am still confused as to why you don't believe an impact study is warranted in this situation. Why does district admin and members of the school board refuse to hire a third party to conduct an impact study when considering implementing such drastic changes, not only to our schools, but to our entire community? Is it the cost? Is it the amount of time? Is it the fear of what an impact study might reveal? Please slow the process down, hire a knowledgeable third party to conduct an impact study. Based on the impact study, your data, the district's financial situation and community input, come up with new options." And this is how I concluded the email. Here is just one individual who is highly qualified to conduct an impact study and I included a link to Dr. Terrence Green's webpage at the University of Texas. The only school board member or administrator who responded was Diane Voight. She said, quote, "I agree that we definitely need to do more research before we consider the drastic cuts that Plan D proposes." Last month, I decided to do the work that you seemed unwilling to do. I reached out to Dr. Green. I learned more about his rightsizing audit. It is data-grounded, third-party review that signals credibility and good governance. Also includes a post-closure audit to be used after decisions have been made, but before changes take effect. In addition, I learned that the cost would cost between $100 and $200,000, which amounts to only about $10 to $20 per student and could take 45 days or up to six months. If we would have started it already, we would have gone with it or almost done.
Thank you, Erica. The next speaker is Hector Padim, followed by Sedona Johnson.
Thank you for pronouncing my last name right. Not many people do. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to say I'm very thankful for the opportunity to have Bethesda Elementary as an option for my children. It was actually the primary reason for my wife and I choosing our neighborhood when we moved three years ago. We're hoping to move again soon because our current home is very small, but we honestly won't consider anywhere other than our existing neighborhood because of Bethesda. I understand that not everyone has the opportunity to live in that neighborhood, but it's very easy to see why it's the most choice into elementary school in Waukesha. It feels very safe to me, not only with the proximity to and visibility of and from the surrounding neighborhood, but I also really appreciate the accessibility, not just for people who are walking there, but also, and moreover, for vehicular access. I've never encountered any kind of significant traffic congestion, neither dropping off nor picking up. I love dual-language program. It's been a wonderful experience for myself and my family. I'm very familiar with the incredible opportunities that being bilingual offers. Being Hispanic, living away from my family, I don't have very many opportunities to speak Spanish in my home and expose my children to that. But Bethesda has really changed that for my children. It's been wonderful watching him speak in a language that I never had the opportunity to teach him. Not only that, he's building friends, friendships and relationships with other children that also speak Spanish.
Thirty seconds.
Growing up, I never really understood the expression, "It takes a village," but I've really experienced it after my child started attending Bethesda. The closeness and proximity of all these families is, is incredible and life-changing and I really hope that you guys will consider keeping it open, not just for my family, but also for everyone else in the neighborhood. I don't know what I would ever do and I don't want to think about what I would do if Bethesda ever closes, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sedona Johnson, followed by Elena Johnson.
Good evening, members of the school board. I'm a 17-year-old student at Waukesha West High School and I have been in the Waukesha School District since kindergarten. I'm here to share why Bethesda Elementary should not be closed. When my family moved to Waukesha, we wanted a strong, supportive school district, one that valued education and community. Bethesda became that place for my family before I was even a student there. I remember playing on that wonderful playground before even stepping inside and it already felt like home. Bethesda is home because it is deeply connected to the neighborhood. From a young age, I could walk to school safely every day. The crosswalk staff always greeted us with a smile and I never felt unsafe walking home because the community always looks out for each other. That sense of safety and belonging is truly special. Inside the school, that same feeling continues. Teachers make every student feel valued. My younger sister experienced this through being a part of the dual-language program and I experienced it through advanced programs that challenged me and helped me be successful from then to now. My eight-year-old brother, who's in the special needs program, also receives the same care and support every day. Another worthy mention is Bethesda's open concept design that strengthens both safety and connection. I remember how it helped teachers to communicate easily, move quickly between areas and how today there are plenty of methods for protection that work when needed. Therefore, I plead to you that closing Bethesda, when just close a building, it would take away a safe, caring community that has helped so many families, including mine, grow and thrive. Thank you for your time and remember, once a Bobcat, always a Bobcat.
Thank you, Sedona. Next up is Elena Johnson, followed by Elvia Rodriguez.
Good evening, members of the school board and administration. My name is Elena Johnson and I'm a freshman at Waukesha West. I'm a former Bethesda Bobcat and I'm here to share why we should not close Bethesda. I was part of the dual-language program and all the teachers were so kind. Throughout my elementary school years, they made everyone feel included and celebrated so many different cultural traditions that made each day special. During announcements, they even used both English and Spanish, helping all students appreciate and further understand the diversity of languages and cultures, no matter what program they were in. My second-grade teacher was my all-time favorite. She inspired me through her energy, kindness and love for learning. She helped shape my confidence and encouraged my passion for Spanish. I still speak Spanish today and even in middle school, I volunteered to do the Spanish version of the Pledge of Allegiance. Bethesda always felt like a second home. Whenever I stopped by to pick up my siblings, my old teachers and even the crossing guards still greet me with a smile. That warmth shows the kind of community Bethesda builds, one that truly cares for every student. Please keep Bethesda open so we can continue the Bobcat legacy. Once a Bobcat, always a Bobcat. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elena. Next speaker is Elvia Rodriguez, followed by Megan Ipilite.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Elvia Rodriguez. I am a bilingual, bi-cultural alumni of the Waukesha School District. I'm one of the original white rock kids, the original bilingual school of Waukesha back in the day, so I can say that being bilingual is very important. My children are, I have three children, one at Butler and two currently at Bethesda, all bilingual, bi-cultural, biliterate. If you can see a difference between mine and myself and them, they are biliterate, meaning that they are learning to read and write in all subjects across the board in both languages, which is something that, I mean, I can read and write, but I can't... mean, I can read and write, but I can't tell you all the sciences and everything in both languages. In addition to being bilingual, bilingual, I am also a nationally certified medical interpreter, which I can attest how having that bilingualness and being able to read and write in both languages can make a difference in a kid's life. I work at a nonprofit that helps young children, and I had to go through extra steps to get the certification because I wasn't billeterate. Eliminating or causing shortages in this program is another, is going to cause more hurdles for my kids to be able to make a difference in other people's lives. I can go to bed every night knowing that I made a difference every single day because I'm bilingual, and closing these bilingual schools, closing these dual-language schools, or cutting these programs is going to affect the difference that they can make somebody else. I can go to bed and have peace of mind. I hope you can too.
Thank you. The next speaker is Megan Ipilite, followed by Nick Fula.
Hi. Bethesda operates using a POD-based instructional layout, and so do some of you. Yet some of you's POD layout has not been questioned, deemed unsafe, or too noisy. If the POD configuration at some of you is considered safe and acceptable for students there, then the same POD configuration at Bethesda must also be considered safe and instructionally sound. To require Bethesda to undergo additional construction to match traditional classroom schools while leaving some of you's nearly identical layout unchanged would be applying two different facility standards to the same instructional model. That is neither equitable nor aligned with the district's stated goal of consistent building expectations, which we were told includes doors on every class and walls around every classroom, and some of you does not have that. So, I'm looking for the quote for walls and doors there. Where is it? I'm sorry I'm getting a little testy. It's been a long process. And again, as one of the other Bethesda parents said, the goalpost just keeps getting moved all the time. If you close Bethesda and Hawthorne, this is what's going to happen. We will be 163 students over capacity by 27-28. Class sizes will jump 32% from 22 students to 28 to 32. If some of you becomes the new dual-language site, they're going to have to get rid of some monolingual classrooms in order to have dual-language. Well, what's going to happen to their classrooms and what's going to happen to their mono teachers? If we keep Bethesda open, it's only one to two extra students a classroom by 27-28. The dual-language program and research shows that they will lose two to three years of progress if it is moved, and that has been backed up by Mr. Pat himself. Bethesda has welcomed every student and family. We have not attacked others, and we are demonstrating what works.
Your time has ended.
Thank you, Megan. Welcome, Nick. And then the last speaker tonight will be Karen Sarni.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for letting me speak publicly this evening. I am honored to be here. My name is Nicholas Fula. I am a eighth grader of Les Paul Middle School, and I think against why Les Paul and Lowell should not close. So, we have previously discussed it in the last few board meetings about some new options, like Option E, F, and G. Option E, when we were doing the mutant thing in Horning, Option E was suggested as the recommended option that will have to cut off Lowell, a few other schools, and Les Paul. I am thinking against this. I think the reason why Lowell has such a decrease in population isn't necessarily that people aren't going to it, which people are, but it's because I think it's not having the peak of the population it could have if it had like a bigger enrollment boundary. Because my friend that went to Lowell in elementary school, he was very close to Lowell, but he was in the Bethesda territory, and he was about 0.8 miles away approximately. Lowell has very good safety also, if that's another problem. Lowell has a good safety. Lowell has very, okay, I'm almost, oh my God, sorry. Lowell has very good safety. Okay.
Just pause it for a second.
Okay, so my time's almost up. Whoops. Okay, so, okay, so Lowell should stay, and Les Paul should also stay because it has very historical value. It's been around for hundreds of years, or a hundred years, and it shouldn't close because of its historical value. Okay, I messed up. So, okay, this is funny, but Lowell, Les Paul has a good dual-language program. Also, I know a lot of people are talking about that Lowell has, Les Paul has one of the best dual-language programs when it comes to middle schools. I think Horning should not be turned its down instead of Les Paul.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Our last speaker tonight is Karen Sarni.
Hi.
It is, yes. Welcome, Karen.
Well, I don't have any kids in the Waukesha School District. I have a niece who is a teacher at Lowell. I understand with declining student enrollments, schools need to be merged. The board has a responsibility to the Waukesha property taxpayers, though your timeline is aggressive. As a retired HR director, I've been in your shoes. I've had to close sites. No matter what you choose, some people are going to be unhappy. It's important that emotions are taken out of the decision and that it is fact-based. Everyone deserves that. I've had the pleasure of being involved with the dedicated Lowell teachers and PTO. As noted by the first speaker, Lowell has a huge special needs population. Many of the children are minorities and come from vulnerable and low-income homes. These kids need stability and security in school as they often don't get it at home. I've experienced firsthand what Lowell continues to do for their entire school population. Now, I know that this decision to close schools did not happen overnight. The $200,000 Lowell's playground project should have been delayed. I personally donated $1,600 for the Lowell children, not for the community. If you decide to close Lowell, I and many others expect an immediate refund from the school district.
Thirty seconds.
I hope you make the right investment for the kids and the community as a whole by keeping walkable Lowell open. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you, Karen. We are going to move to minute approvals before we get into our other business items. I do just want to acknowledge and thank all of you for being able to stay to the time limits and for being respectful of one another. Really is a positive reflection on who we are as a community. So, thank you all very much for that. We will begin with minutes approval for this evening. We have four sets of minutes for your consideration. We have the October 8th regular board meeting, October 8th executive session, October 27th special board meeting, and October 29th executive session expulsion panel. Mrs. Voight.
I move approval of those four sets of minutes.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Brooks. Is there any discussion or questions about the minutes? Seeing none, Mrs. Edinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Natalie Grant?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
David Wyatt?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Thomas Harland?
Aye.
Carrie Kazlofsky?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Pass is nine zero. And we will just turn it over to Mrs. Koenig briefly for the WEF report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Waukesha Education Foundation Board of Directors met last on November 6, and here are some updates for you all. The 2023 grant winners have submitted their grant reports. Watch our social media as we start sharing their project results. The annual WEF pie sale just closed, and year-end giving campaign will go through the end of December. Special thanks to South High School and South Salt Program for offering to help us again this year with our pie sale sort and pack on 11/20. This year, our collaborative giving program partnered with Blessings in a Backpack. For every $50 straight donation to WEF through the end of 2025, we will provide a weekend of meals for SDW students through this great organization. So far, we're pleased to be providing weekend food to 24 SDW students through this campaign. The Evening for Education theme for 2026 is Sail Into Success. Get ready to cruise into laid-back luxury, enjoying the ocean breeze and yacht rock vibes as we celebrate success in our community and schools. We're excited to welcome you aboard on Wednesday, March 25th, at the Marriott in Waukesha. Visit wefe26.givesmart.com for more information, or you can text wefe26 to 76278. Sponsorships and tickets are now available. Know a deserving individual, company, or organization that deserves to be recognized for their contributions in our community? Nominate them for a WEF Award. Don't delay. Nominations are due 12/1, December 1, 2025, just a few weeks away. Visit our website at www.waukeshaeducationfoundation.org and click on the awards link to learn more and nominate someone today. Additional information about our 2026 grant program will be shared shortly. We are looking forward to optimizing our grant impact as we move into the next school year. We're looking at making a few changes that will ensure that everyone has an opportunity to take advantage of this program in the 26-27 school year. And finally, the WEF Board unanimously voted to move forward with an updated strategic planning session in 2026. Our organization has seen tremendous growth in the last five to 10 years, and we are looking to position ourselves to best serve our educators and students in the years ahead. If you have any thoughts to share, please contact Lynette via phone or email. Madam President, that concludes my WEF report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Koenig. Mrs. Voight?
I would just like to add a compliment to the superintendent for his offering to serve as a substitute as an incentive for the donations to the casual-for-acause. I was over at Bethesda today, and they have your picture up on the announcement board, and it was very, very positively received.
Thank you. It's a very popular prize, from what I understand, yeah. All right. I guess this is the moment everybody's been waiting for. So, we will move next into our optimizing our future long-range planning discussion. We are agendized this evening for discussion with possible action, and I will hand it over to Dr. Seber to get us started.
Well, thank you, Dr. Piasik. We have a very brief slideshow, excuse me, for you this evening, and you'll see on your tables, we also have an updated packet of information for you to refer to. We can, we'll go through the slide deck, and then we really just want to really open it up for questions and dialogue with you, how you'd like to proceed. But let's just walk through a few slides here to get started. And really high level, you've seen this so many times, we've had a three-phase process. We find ourselves now in Phase Three where we are presenting a recommendation to you. We did that at the October 27th workshop. And throughout that process, we've appreciated the community's input, the community's participation, our staff's participation, our parents' participation. It's been great. And through information sharing, gathering input, and then two more sessions on October 30th at Horning, we had a total of 37 different opportunities to do that. That was a great privilege for us. You might remember that we talked about this very early on in the process, and really what we're trying to do is set ourselves up for a sustainable and viable long-range future for the school district of Waukesha. And ultimately, there's budgetary aspects to that, but there's also educational aspects to that, and we think we can be leaner and ultimately continue to provide a great product and perhaps even a better product. If you remember, we set out in the beginning of this process to reduce our capacity by 10 to 15%, and our focus was exclusively on the K8 school footprint. And ultimately, before we get to that slide, where we've been, right, so we started in April and May with the discussion and information sharing sessions, nine of those. We then created four different options, A through D, and those are the ones that we talked about all summer long, had feedback on those. Ultimately, we worked with you in September to set those options aside, and at a workshop, through that workshop, we presented an option E and F to you, which were options that we designed based on all of the feedback that we gathered throughout the summer as a cabinet. And you also asked us to create an option G at that time, which was the K6-712 school model. So, we did create ultimately those options. And one of the notable differences between the first options and the second options was Bethesda was not in any of the first four options, but based on your feedback and community feedback, we did put Bethesda back in to the plans in options E and F. And so, we ultimately presented at the October 27th workshop, Option E to you as our administrative or cabinet, I should say, recommendation. And if you remember, Option E, it was having, taking us from 12 elementary schools to nine, so that would include the closed, repurposed, or selling of Hawthorne and Lowell. We also include Whittier in those numbers as an elementary school because they would become part of the K8 STEM. In an Option E, we had it at Les Paul. And ultimately, we were talking about the sale of the buildings that we've talked about in all seven of the plans we've discussed so far, which were Pleasant Hill, Saratoga, or the Saratoga Complex, and White Rock. We had White Rock moving to Lowell in this particular option, and we estimated the budget savings between 3.2 and 3.7 million. What we like about this plan is it addresses the elementary footprint by going from 12 to nine. It addresses the middle school footprint by going from three to two, and it ultimately leaves, we think that's a great first step to get us an 18% seat reduction. But actually, if we use Lowell or a different elementary building for East and WTA once we would sell White Rock, we do find ourselves at a 15% seat reduction, which actually meets the target that we set out to do. So, ultimately then, when we presented this to you in the workshop, some of the questions that you had were, is Les Paul the correct location for the K8 STEM, which we heard, and then also, which are the elementary schools that we should consider closing? And we know we've been focusing on that particular side of town where we think we are a little bit heavy in terms of the number of elementary schools we have. So, ultimately, what we've created for you are two E option variants. So, we have an E1 and an E2 that we will show you this evening. They are in the packet that you have as well. And so, let's talk about what E1 and E2 look like. So, ultimately, E1 would be a modification whereby K8 STEM would move to Horning. And you see, Horning has a little bit larger capacity, 100 more students than Les Paul, so 925. The current enrollment in K8 STEM this year is 607. So, we would use at Horning, based on this year's enrollment, 66% of the enrollment capacity of the building. And as you know, we reduce our capacity by approximately 2% each and every year.
No, I'm sorry. There's no opportunity for public questions at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay. And then also in this model, the other change is that Bethesda is removed from this option, so it's closed, repurposed, or sold, along with Hawthorne and the Whittier site. And then, because Lowell comes back into the plan, our administrative recommendation in Option E1 would be that we would have dual-language elementary schools at Banting, which is a current site, Hayer, which is a current dual-language site, and that we would move the dual-language program to Lowell. We would have, in this plan, an 88% capacity at the elementary schools. We would have, based on this year's enrollment, we would have a 101% capacity at the two middle schools, Butler and Les Paul. And we would have the 72% capacity at the high school, which we have seen consistently in all of our plans. This plan overall allows us to have a 19% seat reduction, or 2,534 seats. But again, here we would suggest moving East and WTA to Hawthorne. That would give us a 15% reduction of 2,064 seats, which is in line, again, with our original target. And this plan, we estimate, had 3.2 to 3.7 million dollars in savings. So, that's E1. And then let's look at E2. So, E2 continues to have So E2 continues to have Horning as the K8 STEM location, but it puts Bethesda back in to the plan. So we would have the three dual elementary sites at Banting, Bethesda, and Hare, like we had in the original E. We would close, repurpose, or sell Hawthorne, Lowell, and Whittier. We would continue to sell the buildings that we've talked about for the long time with Pleasant Hill, Saratoga, or the complex, which includes Harvey Phillip and the service building, and White Rock. We've, we've talked about, and we talked about this at the workshop, too, that we would have East and WTA remain at White Rock for the time being, at least through 26, 27. It will take us time if these plans are approved to sell school buildings. That, that doesn't happen overnight, certainly. And ultimately, our capacity numbers on the blue side of the right screen, based on this year's enrollment, we would have 87 percent capacity at the elementary level. Again, we would have the 101 percent capacity based on this year's enrollment. That would be under, certainly, 100 percent by next year in our consistent high school 72 percent capacity number. So in this next slide, we just kind of put them next to each other for you to consider. And so we appreciated certainly your suggestions and your desire to see a different look of an option E. So as we talked about at the workshop, we believe that K8 STEM at Horning is feasible and would work. And ultimately, we wanted to show you two different elementary lineups, one with Lowell and one with Bethesda, for your considered discussion and for us to be able to answer questions for you on those. And we'll stop at that point. I just want to say again, and I said, I've said this a couple of different times, I think this has been a very strong process for us. It's 18 months before we would implement something from the time that we, we started, when we talk about the September of '26 implementation. We've had a number of different opportunities to talk with people. We've listened, we've learned from those opportunities. That's led us to some of these other options, which we're, we're excited about. And as I've told you multiple times, we're very appreciative that you've invested yourself in this process. We know it's not easy for anyone, and it's obviously a decision of huge magnitude for you, which we're, we're happy to try and, and support and answer any questions that we, that we can as we work toward finding that, that best, that most palatable path forward. So why don't I stop there, Dr. Piasik? The only trouble with subbing kindergarten is I have not been able to shake this little cold ever since I was there. But I will get over it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Seibert. Okay. So I'm sure we have lots of interest in the discussion. So before we begin tonight, I just wanted to start with a little refresher. So just to remind everyone that the public comment period is now closed, so this is a board discussion. If someone were to make a motion that became active, debate is typically then limited to board members. So questions of the administration would be appropriate to make now. The role of the administration or the staff during that deliberation period is limited to providing objective factual information, typically at the request of the chair. So I would ask if we get to that point, that then we handle that through requests to address those questions over to the administration. Of course, we're not there yet. So you can direct, direct those questions through me. As always, as we talked before, I will look to balance opportunities for board members to speak and to share time and allow subsequent opportunities only after all members wishing to speak have actually had a turn to speak. And this just ensures that our discussion remains orderly and balanced and consistent with Robert's rules. I will do my best with the help of Dr. Seibert and Mr. Watt if there are any parliamentary questions. I also, just based on the last couple of meetings, would like to ask the members of our community who are here tonight to try to refrain from some of the side conversations because we do hear those, and it makes it difficult sometimes to hear each other since our microphones are going toward you and not toward each other. So we would just appreciate keeping that to a minimum if possible, and we'll let you know if it becomes a problem, we can just pause for a second if we have to. Okay. All right. So what questions would we have for the administration, or anyone like to begin? Mrs. Kozlowski?
Thank you. So one of the, I think the key points of discussion today is really going to filter itself around Bethesda and Lowell. In the heart of everything that I've said, and to keep it short since I'm reminded that people already know what I think, I just want to say that the entire intent of this is student count, staffing, curriculum, and now we're focused on facilities. So it's less the building, and I'm far more focused on the services. With saying that, Ms. Gennarman, I'm not sure if this is at you, but there is concern about the dual-language program ability to shift. I'm, I'm very concerned about the feedback that we have that it can't be easily moved from one building to the next. So in my, in my view, our curriculum is robust. This is an extremely established program for 13 years, and we are taking a look at now effectively consolidating that out. And so I'd like to get some insight into really how does it look when we would shift an entire program from school to school and to a school that currently does not have a dual-language structure in it?
Why don't I try to start, Mrs. Kozlowski? So one of the first things that we did when we started this process was meet with the dual-language leadership at the time, as well as some of the dual-language principals to talk about. At first, we were talking about a, a Banting-Horning kind of concept, right? Where we'd have like 4K through 3 at Banting and 4 through 8 at Horning, and it would be a dual-language hub. And they didn't think that was a good idea. They thought monolingual kids need to be with dual-language kids in order to be successful. So we, we heard that. And they also said that, from their perspective, that a dual-language culture that's established is, is better if we can keep that rather than trying to recreate it. So all along, we've, we've tried to build our plans, whether it was two dual-language sites in the first plans or now three in this plan, with sites that are current dual-language sites. With that being said, all of those dual-language programs were created at one time or another, right? With probably, to your point, much less expertise in dual-language than we currently have now. So if we were to consider moving a dual-language program to a Lowell, for example, as we have in these, in one of these plans, you would bring the right leadership and the right teachers, right? Half of the teachers would have to be Spanish-speaking teachers to run a dual-language program. And so Lowell would, would not be Lowell any longer as we know it, right? It would be a school built with different staff, different leadership, to run a dual-language center or program in that school with, from people who have experience doing it in other dual-language sites within the School District of Waukesha. So is it possible? I would say yes, it is possible. Would it have potentially some challenges, like, like we've heard about, right? And trying to get it up and running? And does everybody know, some of the kids that have been at Lowell might not be as comfortable with it as others, right? There might be some challenges with it. But I would say, could you do it? Yes. The reason we didn't recommend it out of the gate was because of that guidance that we got from the, the dual-language principals. Ms. Gennarman, is there anything that you would add to that? Or Mr. Pat?
We would just add that, going back to the curriculum pieces, that now we have such strong curriculum pieces for monolingual and dual, that, that will support our students as they move forward. Same with our students who have ESL needs and go that route for their services. So that is a strong piece regardless if the program stays currently at a, at a school that already has it, or if it does move to another school. Another piece that I would add is that as we look at all of these options, there has always been a piece of redistricting in them. And so we are already working with principals around what are those best-practice strategies around creating a really positive culture when you are blending and mixing students and staff. And so whether dual or not, we already know we want to be mindful and very thoughtful and allow for time for that to happen and build those strong communities even before the students enter the school for the school year.
Thank you. If it's okay, Madam President, I, I have kind of a series of questions around specifically the DHH capabilities and services at Lowell. There was quite a bit of coverage in the media last week, and I, I think it would be helpful to our community if we could do that, so if you would allow me to...
That is germane. And the point I was making earlier is that if we have an active motion on the floor, we wouldn't be able to engage in that. That would be appropriate.
Right. I guess what I was asking for was the ability to do follow-ups until I've gotten through the items that I have here. There's about three areas that I would like Mr. Pat, if he's willing, to answer for me if that's possible.
Okay. I'll just keep an eye on the time. If we, if we have others that want to speak, I might shift at some point, but give it a shot.
All right. Sounds fair. Thank you. Mr. Pat, can you just really quick, share with us what the breakdown is of DHH populations at Lowell compared to the rest of the district, particularly at the elementary level, but as a percentage of the full body of students that are, that are considered DHH, students that need DHH services?
Yes. So currently at Lowell, we have six students who are receiving DHH services. Three of them are in the, the most early childhood, so that is Lowell specialty is DHH early childhood. No other buildings have that specific DHH program in the building. We have two at Banting, three at Bethesda, one at Hillcrest, two at Hare, two at Some of You, one at Meadowbrook, and I believe one early childhood at Prairie as well.
Okay. Okay. So not all of our early childhood runs through, DHH services runs through Lowell. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. Any, any student who needs services or special education services, including DHH, is a least-restrictive environment, and that generally means being at a neighborhood school or a school within the neighborhood they live, students they may know, families they may know. And so it's an IEP-driven decision and generally a family decision that comes first into where students will attend for any disability.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. So now, if I could, I'd like to pivot to the adaptive technologies that we've heard a lot about, both in the media last week and many addressed here at the podium tonight. Can you speak to the different adaptive technologies that we have available to us at Lowell? What's available in the other schools where we service those students, and what, if any, particular advantages any of them have? Or are they interchangeable? If you could address some of that for us, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Lowell's infrastructure, it has some, some hardwired components to it. So Lowell has seven classrooms that have a sound-filled, a sound-field speaker system. What that is, is in the four corners, it's a speaker system that when the teacher speaks into the microphone, it projects sound fairly equally throughout the classroom. They also have a gymnasium that is very similar to that, has a wired system that, again, has a more equal sound compared to when a teacher is in front of the classroom speaking. And so that's the advantage to that. It also has three booths where they're soundproof booths where students can go in and drown out all background, ground noise to work on language and different aspects. Also a technology that is there, but is, I guess getting into the speaker systems, the speaker systems themselves are hardwired. They are not Bluetooth technology or Bluetooth, Bluetooth capable. The system that is Bluetooth capable is, it's called a Roger system. It's an FM system. That is available to every student in every school. We are part of a consortium with multiple districts where we pay a fee in order to gain access to the equipment for Bluetooth technology, and it is obviously driven by the IEP, driven by the IEP team with, you know, collaboration with the parents. But every student has access with cochlear implants and hearing aids to a Bluetooth technology mic, so the teacher can wear it. They can do groups, and then they'll hear the teacher's voice more directly right through their cochlear implant or through their hearing aid. That, again, is available to every student in every school in the School District of Waukesha.
Okay. So if I can clarify, those, those systems that we hear about that are hardwired and installed at Lowell are not Bluetooth-enabled. They are amplification systems, correct?
Correct.
So just from my knowledge, how do we handle amplification needs? Because my understanding is, some students, the services they require through their IEP are tied specifically to amplification. That's what they need. Other students, and I think the cochlear implants is, is one such example, really rely on some of those Bluetooth-enabled devices, correct? Am I right on that?
Yes, especially at the younger grades.
Right. Okay. So the question I have is, knowing that we have students who have both those kinds of needs scattered through the district, how do we handle amplification needs, for example, in other elementary schools that may not have the speaker systems that you've described at Lowell?
Yeah. The devices we use are, they're called tower systems. So same concept as the hardwired speakers at Lowell. They're tower systems that are very amplified, and they project generally, the teacher will wear a microphone around their neck, and then students who are, need to utilize that DHH students will sit in the front, and that amplification will be generally right there and coming at them. So it's a very effective system. The difference is, it's coming at you from the front of the room, one way, very amplified, where the hardwired system has four speakers, and then the sound comes at you from, from all different ways. So that is really the distinct difference between it.
But in, in no case are there needs that students have that require a, that, that sort of surround sound amplification. We can meet the needs just as effectively with these tower systems that you're describing that we use in other schools. Is that correct?
Yes. In general, we can. If for some reason an IEP would warrant it, or there's some special situation, again, we would look to see what it would take to move it to a specific classroom. But generally, students would utilize a tower system, and it would be effective. Multiple districts don't have sound-field systems, and they use the tower systems to meet the needs of their students.
Okay. Real quick on the, on the quiet rooms. If, if you could talk a little bit more about those. If you could maybe give a little background on how they came to be, and then I'm curious if this is, if this is something that is, you know, we, we try to handle in other buildings? Are there other kids that could benefit from quiet spaces? Or is there something unique about these and the services that we can offer in them at Lowell? And I'm also curious if this is standard in most school districts to have at least one school that have these sort of soundproof rooms?
Yeah. So there are three soundproof booths. The history of it is, there were, there was grant money used many years ago. What they are is their music room, so individuals can go in there and play instruments and be quiet to the outside and have no outside noise in order to focus on sound. And so they were brought in as part of a grant, and individuals at the time who spent the grant money had, saw these as their, people they knew were musicians, and purchased those for the purpose of the DHH program that we've talked about before as a hub back in the day, where multiple individuals sent students to Lowell, specifically from surrounding districts, to get DHH services before technologies have advanced. So they are, they are soundproof. There are three of them, and there is no other district that has these booths who delivers DHH services. They are super quiet. They work really, really well. They are better than any room you try to make quiet, but students who need support in a quiet room, a quiet space is manufactured to the best of the ability for the attendant teacher, and then they move forward with services.
Okay. One final question, if I may. So you talked about Lowell having been a hub for early childhood DHH services. Today, how many students do we get on average who come to Lowell from other districts because of the unique services we offer there?
We probably averaged one every, every year has maybe come, have, has come to the district for the early childhood services.
So, so fair to say, then, that technological advances have allowed other school districts to provide those kinds of services that they may not have been able to before? Is that true?
That's true. And when you look at least-restrictive environment, the goal is, at that early, early age, to come in and potentially get some services, and then move back to your home district for that least-restrictive environment to be... your home district for that least restrictive environment, to be back into your home district versus, in the past, you had to come to that site, which was not in your community, and stay there and have services, which isn't always in the best interest for a child's social development as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pat.
Other questions? Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Mr. Brooks, and then Mr. Zenobia.
Okay. So one of the things that we heard a lot, not just today, but for the last several weeks, is kind of concerns and questions about the process. And I was curious, because we've kind of mentioned this at previous meetings, but I was curious to see what other districts who have been going through similar conversations have done in terms of a timeline. So just for important context, Wasa School District, they first introduced the topic of closing schools in December of '24. They made a decision in early January in 2025, so about a month. Our neighbors in Kettle Moraine took about three to six weeks, depending on when you, the first listening session took place. Hudson recently closed two schools, they had three weeks. Menominee Area School District, they had their first publicly notice consideration of this, March 24th, and then they had a board vote April 14th, so about two to three weeks. Oshkosh Area District took eight to 11 weeks. Now, they did it via referendum, so talk about pitting school communities against each other. Manassia, two to three weeks. Kenosha Unified closed, I believe, seven elementary schools, and they did that over the course of two to three months. So just, I think that context is important, because when we hear things like slowdown, we are an outlier in terms of how long we have spent discussing this. And in fact, when I visited Bethesda last week, I asked one of the teachers, you know, just, "How's the school year going?" And she said, "It's going great, but everybody's kind of anxious, right? Everybody's kind of just waiting for some decision to be made." And I've heard this from other members of the community too, not just at Bethesda or at other schools that are on the list. I don't think that we can continue to delay a vote and have this hangover school communities any longer. I don't think that's fair to teachers or kids, or to the taxpayers who are just kind of waiting for some sort of action to take. One of the folks today mentioned that we should be looking to school districts like Wauwatosa, who have been responsible, taking years to plan responsibly. I think Wauwatosa, 2024, November 2024, they passed a $60 million capital referendum, a $64 million operating referendum, and they still close schools. Not just close schools, they closed a STEM school, which was one of the best elementary schools in the entire state. The reason being is because the demographics of that school didn't match the demographics of the entire school district. So whether or not they did an equity audit to determine that, I don't know, but I don't think Wauwatosa is a great example of what we should be following. We should not be, and they're still considering closing more schools. So I think the process here, if anything, has been welcome, because we've gotten a lot of good feedback. But the unintended consequence of taking as long as we have is that now we do run into situations where you have certain school communities that are kind of pitted against each other, and things are getting personal. And I, we've had a number of people mention it today. I don't fault any parent, regardless of your Lowell, Bethesda, Hawthorne, for advocating for your kids. I think, you know, we shouldn't be holding it against one another for doing what any parent in this district would do to advocate for their child's needs. So I just want to put that out as a reminder, because I think everybody here is advocating for their kids in good faith, and I just appreciate the commentary that we've heard throughout this process from folks in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you. So just a question for our administration. I know we've talked a lot about costs and improvements that will have to be done to all of our elementary schools eventually, at least the ones that we're considering here tonight, and in the form of deferred maintenance, as well as some other costs to bring certain schools and most of our elementaries up to additional standards. And so I would ask our administration, maybe just to give us a bit of an overview of, you know, looking at these costs on paper, what are the real financial impacts that we've seen, that we've already talked about to some extent, but a refresher of, you know, what those are in each case of the four elementary schools that we're considering that are here on our chart, Bethesda, Hawthorne, Lowell, and Summit View.
Sure. The numbers that are reflected in the, for the deferred maintenance is a study that we had done, really tied from our upgrades at the HVAC work that we've been doing the last several years. And so the study really is looking at the major operating systems of our schools. HVAC, again, electrical systems, plumbing, and we have some roofing information for each school as well. So that's what those totals equal out to for Bethesda, Hawthorne, Lowell, and Summit View. So it's, again, not, we're not getting into windows and things like that, there's certainly other, but I think it's a pretty good feel of what the costs are that are looming out there for our schools. But one other thing with any deferred maintenance study, it's not, we have to do all these things today, it's, you know, identifying the useful life of equipment, doing those calculations. So those numbers that are on page three of the packet that was handed out tonight is really improvements that in an ideal world, with engineers looking at it, you would be replacing those HVAC, electrical, plumbing type of systems over the next zero to five years. That's the window of time that's being captured with those numbers. Oh, and roughs, right.
In the case of the modifications that are being recommended, you know, we've got modifications that would be recommended for Bethesda. We also have some for less Paul and Horning, you know, depending which one would become a K-8 STEM. You know, one question, looking at some of the numbers that we've talked about, and some of the money that's been put into our middle schools over, you know, the last five or six years. I'm just curious about the capacity of Bethesda, specifically, is about 60% of one of our middle schools. And when I'm looking at those numbers, my curiosity is how confident are we that what's been provided here of a couple million dollars to do significant changes would be, how comfortable are we with that? I guess is my concern, my question.
In terms of the capacity being lost, or from the...
Well, in terms of the initial cost, if we're going to bring Bethesda up to...
Yeah, those, we had Findorf, who did a lot of our referendum work, and is very familiar with working with the city and all the other things we have to go through for approvals and everything. So we think that that number is pretty solid. It also holds a contingency in there. So we think that number is kind of the bookend, and I think that's what this conversation the last several months has provided, is we're not obligated to do anything, so there is a, you could just move into Bethesda. But the other bookend is to add walls like we have in every other elementary school. So I think that's a pretty solid number. Until you get engineers and architects truly in here, I think it would probably move, but I also know that sometimes you go into schools and the costs bloom on all of a sudden. So, and there is the option we talked about with the addition of some segmentation doors around the library. I also think those doors around the outside of the building tied directly to those instructional spaces is another area. So there's several steps we could go through to make Bethesda a little safer than it is. And I probably said this 100 times through this process, Bethesda is a safe school, okay? And I'm not here to say it is an unsafe school, but in comparison to other elementaries, there is an architectural difference between them and Bethesda. So there's increment we could do, and I think those are things we could look at if you wanted to, but that's really up to the board's discretion on whether that investment needs to be made. And I know the crux of this conversation between these two schools is you have a school under two miles, probably about a mile away, that has those improvements in place already. So it's really a difficult thing to maneuver, but I think that's the basis of the conversation between the two options.
Thank you.
Mrs. Boy.
I have three questions. The first would be, as I look at the E, I'm very pleased that we're making a switch to Horning versus Les Paul, first of all. But as we're looking at the switch to make Horning a K-8 STEM location, leaving the other two middle schools with 101% capacity, I can't help think back to when we were visiting New Berlin, and we were told that we want to be conscious of not overcapacity kind of, you know, plans. 101% doesn't allow any wiggle room, and I have a real hard time with accepting a proposal that would put us in that situation. You know, I think that could be avoided by not expecting the closure of Whittier and the moving of the kids there at this time. You know, once the population would get down to a level that, you know, it would give more time for Horning to accept the fact that they're, you know, no longer going to be a regular middle school. To try to do that for next year seems like too soon to make that kind of commitment and have 101% capacity resulting in that option. And I'm wondering how, if that's something that we could consider delaying that transition? You know, at this point, I don't think Horning has even an inkling of the fact that they're in this plan going to be no longer a middle school as we know it. And, you know, to do that drastically for next year, I think it's something that would need to be phased in and get to a more realistic capacity to allow the middle schools to be able to get down to two per se.
That's possible, Mrs. Boy. Yeah, that is a different way to think about it. You would just move the 6'8" Saratoga kids into Horning, they would fit, and you could move the Whittier kids at a later time, if that was the board's wish.
I, we just, have we considered that phasing in to be able to make it a more realistic capacity kind of a situation? Since it's not, you know, I just, when Dr. Garza had said 90%, you know, when we got to that point, you know, we'd be more realistic than to try to make a move with 101%. It's just, it doesn't allow any space for the special needs kind of room availability for testing and for, you know, breakout groups and things like that. So I'm just very concerned about setting up a plan that, you know, has 101% capacity kind of a situation. So that's my first concern. My second is, in light of our amazing report cards that have just come out, and hopefully all of the board members have seen the fact that the school district of Waukesha now is, by the DPI report card, is exceeding expectations as a district, and we have many schools that are significantly exceeding expectations, et cetera. A concern that's been raised is, how do you take schools out of the mix when they are doing a great job? And, you know, just because of our capacity situation discussion, you know, it's hard to rationalize making, you know, Hawthorne go away, Lowell go away, Summit View go away, you know, for instance, you know, and/or Bethesda, you know, in a situation where they're doing a great job of servicing our kids. And I'd like to, you know, put the emphasis not on capacity, but on student services. You know, when you're talking about 500 kids that are going to be displaced, how disruptive is that in their educational experience? And is it necessary, again, like right now for 20, for this coming school year? You know, I just am very, very concerned that we're making this capacity discussion the guide, the ruler for what's happening versus a concern for the kids and the services that we are providing well at so many of these different locations, especially for the special needs populations like at Lowell. You know, I visited this morning the early childhood program there, and, you know, the concept of those special needs programs that would be high needs and are going to be reimbursed at a higher rate, again, I just asked this question to Mr. Clark. Can we look at the fact that there's going to be additional reimbursement for those high needs services that are being provided, as well as a higher level of reimbursement for regular special education services? Could that be factored into the, you know, the effect on the budget? You know, right now, we're saying it's a cut of $3 million, but what will we be receiving in that, in that form of new state funding that could help to address our capacity needs as we, you know, allow more space for the kids to be able to receive those services in some of the buildings that we have?
We have factored those into our projections, now that the state budget's been finalized. And one thing to keep, the funding for that reimbursement from the state is going up, it's undeniable, especially in this fiscal year that we're currently in. But the cost of special ed are also going up at the exact same pace. We add special ed staff, I think we've done it four or five years straight, and maybe the COVID year is the only year that stopped us from adding more that year because of the way the arrangement is. So I do think, you're right, the funding has gone up, but the costs associated with it are keeping pace with it. And one other point I'd like to make, and it kind of goes back to things we talked about early on, and you're right, it is the services that we should be focusing on, and I would just phrase it this way, we're looking at capacity not as the leader and the reason we're doing it. We're doing this because of our ability to fund the services, and we're looking at facility capacity as being a way of saving dollars to allow the services to still be in our facilities. So I said it early on often, and I kind of got away from it, but this is really a, do we fund seats or services conversation? For those parents who've been around for a lot, they probably have heard me say that, but our ability to maintain those services and all this capacity, I don't see that being viable, even with the increases we're seeing in special ed funding.
So to add on to that, the cost, especially of the high needs special education reimbursements, those are also variable based on the year, students, different aspects, but a projection of not only the general special education reimbursement for the state, as well as the high needs special education reimbursement, so that's anything that we spend on a student over $30,000. That is submitted every single spring, and then it's a retroactive from the year before for those reimbursements, and they do, again, vary. So that projection for both of those in the future is approximately a $3.3 million reimbursement based on what the state's spinal budget says, and based on what we have spent in the past.
The other factor, you know, as we look at the bottom line there, is the idea of the sales of these properties that are available, to be sold, like by selling the locations at Pleasant Hill, the properties at Saratoga, the property, you know, at White Rock. Could that money that's received for the payments of those sales go into offsetting some of this, you know, budget kind of circumstance? I know when the question had come up at the October 31st session, that goes into a different fund, and I'm wondering if that could be delegated, especially to help us get through this declining enrollment circumstance, that as we decrease our footprint, the money that comes in from those sales go directly to help to offset the budget kind of, you know, structural deficit that's in existence?
That certainly could be part of it. The problem with real estate, though, is, and for those of you who've been on finance for a while, we've been talking about trying to sell a property for six years. So to factor that in, now, would we use those resources like we've done in the past with things like Esser and other one-time monies? I would urge the board to consider one-time expenditures to go with the one-time revenue, meaning you go in there and maybe you improve infrastructure or hearing systems or whatever the board might consider at the time, but it's just way too difficult with real estate, school real estate property, to factor in the sale of the properties, because you truly don't know when that cash flow is going to hit your books. If you're talking... know when that cash flow is going to hit your books. If you're talking, just to give you some idea of scope, if you're talking to developer looking to develop land, let's say they want to bulldoze a building and build townhouses or condos or whatever, you're talking at least a year and a half. And I think that's on the fast side of a real estate deal being completed. So it's a good point, and it's something that we will have to factor in, but it's just the timing of that conversation. We just have no control over.
You said you had three questions. Do you have more?
I do, but I'll let someone else have a turn before I continue.
Thank you. I appreciate that one. I want to just see if there's other comments that need to be made. I would just ask, maybe we don't move to action until we let her finish. Mr. Harlan.
I also wanted to echo a thanks for considering Horning as the STEM site. I know there was a lot of community feedback on that. It looks in the projected maps that it was simply retained as the same proposed middle school boundaries, just relocated with Les Paul. But that has not been sent over to first student, really, any of the maps has been sent to first student at this point, correct?
Correct. Nothing has been sent over to them. They are, they will be prepared, whatever is decided, whatever we send them to, at least get information on if individuals will qualify for busing or not. So they are ready to give us a preliminary if that is something that's necessary.
So if one of these options is moved forward tonight, the map is still tentative, even after we would potentially vote to approve? Is that correct?
Yes.
Wanted to ask Mr. Clark a question in, kind of following up on Mr. Zenobia's about the deferred maintenance. We received an email today about the water drainage and playground runoff at Bethesda. Was that a number within that deferred maintenance piece, or is this, would that be considered outside of any of the numbers that we've received at this point?
No, it's a topic we've had conversations about. But normally, the deferred maintenance studies that we do, it's your bigger building system type of issues, like I mentioned, plumbing, electrical, HVAC type of systems and roofs. So it's not included in the deferred maintenance, but it's something we've looked into and tried to improve it. It's just a tough site to come up with an effective solution so far.
Yeah, agreed. Bethesda is a fantastic location, just a lot of challenges with the water drainage and some of the items at that specific facility. My final question is in regards to E1 with Lowell being selected, then as the third DL. I guess, could we kind of understand, I know, going back to option B, I believe, was one of the initial ones where Summit View was identified as potential dual-language site. Can we kind of talk through what, why Lowell now versus originally Summit View?
Sure. So in the original four options, we were looking for the really large buildings because we were suggesting going from four dual-language sites to two. So that's where we thought Banting at 558 and Summit View for geographic balance at 608 could make sense, because we wanted the four sections across, like you heard in some of the comments. Now with three sites, we can afford to have a little bit smaller site in order to accommodate it, because we still think, within a couple of years, we can probably go to two sites. But we're doing three out of the gate to make sure that we have the ability to offer the program to all the kids and families who want it. So ultimately, we thought Lowell, being right in between, if we were to keep Lowell being right in between Bethesda as a dual and Hawthorne as a dual, would make sense geographically for those kids that are in dual. And then Summit View, with its significant capacity, could really be essentially filled with monolingual students and keep that arts integration identity. Thank you. You bet.
Others want to speak. Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you. I just have two things I wanted to visit. The first, I wanted to mention, or payback on what you said, Mr. Brooks. I know there's been a lot of talk of impact study, and I understand the need, or the want to, you know, continue the conversation and, you know, examine and look at all angles, have people from the outside come in and look at everything. There's a reason that a lot of the districts have done what Mr. Brooks had detailed, and it's exactly because of, you know, the length of what we're going through. A lot of districts do want to avoid that, and I think it's sometimes for good reason. They, you know, probably figured, make the decision is going to be difficult, but rather make it quickly than cause this extended period of anxiety. If we were to have another impact study and continue the conversation and continue the studies, it's just increasing the duration of a lot of anxiety for a lot of families, a lot of, you know, teachers that work in the district. And unfortunately, you know, adult anxiety often, you know, transcends onto the students. I understand, you know, the desire, why other districts did what they did. And I appreciate the effort that we're going through to try to hear all voices and make a really, you know, well-informed decision about which school is to close. As a teacher that has taught for years, I kind of went through my own history. And I taught students that were displaced. I was at White Rock, and then I went to Hawthorne, and then White Rock closed, and those students were shuffled to Hawthorne. So I saw firsthand students that normally wouldn't go to Hawthorne, did go to Hawthorne because they had no White Rock. Then, when I moved to Butler, I saw the same thing when Blair closed. I saw the students that, you know, that had to be displaced, and they ended up at other schools. I was a teacher of these students. I got to see their reactions those first few days. I guess what I want to say, as a former teacher, educated for 32 years, and as a parent, kids are extremely resilient. Kids are going to adapt. And I think sometimes it's harder for the adults, you know, to go through a change. I feel, I've seen it firsthand. When kids come in, it's a new school. By the second period, third period, or by the second or third day, this is their new school and everything's fine, and they just move on. I think sometimes our own anxieties as parents and, you know, even teachers, we tend to assume how it will impact. But often, like I said, being on the other end of living my life with kids for 32 years, they don't have these same reactions. Once they get into wherever they are, wherever the situation will be that they'll end up, they are going to be okay. I've seen it. So, you know, that brings peace to my heart, even though, because this is a difficult decision. I know, once the dust settles and we move forward, whatever it comes about of our decisions, the kids are going to be okay. They really are. So I just wanted to mention that. The other thing I do want to mention is, being in the district and having experience with dual-language program and being a Spanish speaker myself, I have a unique perspective when it comes to the dual-language program and what it takes to implement, create one, sustain it, grow it, support it. Any, I thought that you can just move a program, it's not as easy as it sounds, especially when something has gone from the ground up in a school where it was done with the first kindergarten class, and then they added the first grade and brought, and literally, you know, I'm speaking of Bethesda, obviously, that school, from the mistakes of other trials within the district, did it a whole different approach. Was it difficult in the beginning? Yes. Were there arguments? And from the inside, that I hear a lot of disagreements between staff members, because things change. Again, it's that change component where everyone is very, you know, very scared of change, they assume of the worst, I understand that. But once the program took root, and more importantly, once the community saw the impact, it's now a program that that community, you know, of course, you know, sustains in every way, you know, it's beloved, I understand that. I have seen programs that have moved. They've just upped and moved them. It didn't go as well. I remember very well when Blair became a dual-language site, when White Rock closed, it was not a smooth sailing experience. You're having new staff join existing staff, and there was a lot of, a lot of very difficult beginning years and arguments, and staff left. It, I just wanted, I share this because I want everyone to understand that, on paper, it sounds great, we'll just do this, or we'll do this. But again, when you try to move an existing program, and you just think, well, we'll just move it, we have great curriculum, I'm not saying we don't have that, of course we do, but there are factors that we have to take into consideration as well when you make a huge move like that. And again, I've seen it both sides. I've seen it done what I feel to be the right way, and I've seen it done where maybe it wasn't probably the most optimal way. And there's definitely, you know, there's a lot to be said about just thinking you can move an existing program without there being some very difficult years ahead. And in my perspective, why, with everything else we're doing, would we want to, you know, add that to the problem list? But again, I just wanted to bring that up. It's my perspective, and I just felt like sharing a few things that I've seen over my many, many years of education.
I think, Mr. Brooks, I was gonna say, are you gonna, you have a line of questions? Or is it?
I think it's a much shorter line of questioning. But if someone wants to, if you want to call someone else, that's fine with me.
Okay, I mean, David and Eric, I'm also getting some eye contact from people that we might need a very short break, because some of us have been in meetings since 6:00 PM. So why don't you go ahead? Why don't you both go ahead? And then we'll, I mean, just like a really two-minute break.
So there's been a lot of discussion around two facilities-related items at Bethesda. Without weighing in on whether or not I believe it's necessary, I'd like to ask, if we take the most robust solution to the issues of safety and noise, and we build out the walls and add the locking doors, et cetera, have we contemplated whether or not that could cause us to lose some capacity within that building as a result of the additional walls, perhaps egress space, et cetera? Has there been any, anything looked into on that?
Yeah. So on page three, you see, when you look at overall square footage, so Bethesda is 59,135 with a capacity of 558. Hawthorne is 57,495, obviously has walls and doors, and has capacity of 470. And then you look at Lowell at 70,288, which is a little over 11,000 square feet bigger than Bethesda, with a capacity of 480. But that signals to me is that if you did put in full walls and doors, you're going to be somewhere closer to that number, that 470, 480 number, because it's just going to remove some of the flexibility and openness, obviously, that they currently enjoy. So a building that's 11,000 square feet bigger but has capacity of 78 less, right, that just signals to me that we would likely lose some capacity at Bethesda by doing that. And that's why we tried to show you that there are three options, right? And one is nothing, right? We figure out that they've made that culture work, and we continue that culture. The other is that middle ground, where we do the outside doors replacement, and we do the locking doors on each of the pods, so that we can not only lock off the entire library area like we currently do, but then we could lock off kindergarten first, you know, second, and so forth. And we think that would be a viable solution that would add a safety component that could be successful, and we wouldn't have to go the full route, and then consider the reduction in capacity.
Okay. The other item, following up on the earlier question around the issues with the playground and water drainage and so forth. So I know that we received an email today from a constituent, today or yesterday, that laid out a potential solution. I'm just wondering, Mr. Clark, have we had our facilities folks take a look at that, and do they have an opinion on its viability?
We didn't really get into viability. We just kind of reviewed the content of it. And we've had several conversations over the years of different options, but nothing that's jumped out at me. So I really can't say we've had time to really analyze that into great detail or not. All I can, all I can say about that site is, it's the same battle we have at North High School. It's a very flat area. And to generate water movement in that area is just harder than a lot of the other options that we have at other sites. So, but I'd hate to speak on that, having it been an email sent to us a day earlier, and we really haven't the time to chew it up.
Okay. So I guess, just as a quick follow-up to that, this, and maybe you can't answer this either, does it resemble anything that we have considered when we have been thinking about how to address those issues? My understanding is, this is something that comes up frequently as something to consider doing, and that there are reasons why the district has chosen not to, that have more to do with the difficulty of figuring a solution that's viable than it does just not caring about it?
Yeah, we have annual meetings with the principals, my maintenance and custodial staff, and IT, Steve Schloman leads that. We meet with the principals annual, or the principal over there, and all of our principals in the district. And it's always a topic of, boy, it'd be nice to figure out what to do with this water. But it's never, it's one of those things that's always there. But for years, I can't say it was ever the biggest thing that was ever requested for us to do. It was just one of those things, especially when we talked about playground equipment needing to be replaced, and the impact on the rubber matting underneath the equipment of that water. A, we never had a great solution that we had a lot of faith in. But B, for a lot of years, I would say it wasn't the highest priority at that school, from the principal, from the school's view.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Brooks.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of what Ms. Koenig said. I appreciate your perspective and experience. I think it's an important one to hear. I agree wholeheartedly, right? The fastest thing that is going to help students get used to any sort of new environment is having loving, caring, dedicated teachers waiting for them every single day in their classroom. And I know that, no matter what decision is made tonight, that's going to be the case for all nine of our elementary schools, all three of our middle schools, all three of our high schools. So I think that's important to keep in mind. And it's been something that I've certainly been keeping in mind since the start, right? I keep, I've said it a million times, but buildings don't educate kids, teachers do. And I'm always, if I have to choose between investing in teachers and investing in resources for the classroom, and investing in brick and mortar, I'm always going to choose investing in teachers. And I think that's the goal of whatever the outcome is tonight. That is the goal that I know that we all should be keeping in mind.
Okay. I know that there are some other questions. And just to be responsive to the board, and just to be really quick, we're going to do a two-minute max recess. I would ask all board members, please, to refrain from having discussion, and that we don't engage with the community members. But just whoever needs to take a break can take one. We'll reconvene in three minutes. I'm serious, three minutes. Reconvened, and we can resume the discussion. It's looking like, Mrs. Boye, you have something to say? Go ahead.
My question has to do with the formal equity complaint that has been filed recently, and just wondering where we're at in terms of being able to address the concerns that were raised in that, that were referenced in one of the speakers this evening as well.
So I can answer that, Mrs. Boye. We did receive it, and we're working with our legal counsel to process it in accordance with our policy 2260. So that's underway.
Does that impact our decision to make a closure if it's like, it's almost like it's being challenged before we do a closure, you know, kind of recommendation? Should that complaint be processed before we would make a recommendation to, you know, to make another closure that they feel is not in compliance with the equitable impact on protected student populations?
I would say, based on Dr. Piaszczak and I's conversations with our legal counsel, that
I would say based on, uh, Dr. Piaszczak and I's conversations with our legal counsel, that, that, that would not be a concern.
Because one of the things that I think it asked for is an impact study, and that's one of the things that had been echoed, um, and, or seen through the petition that had received seven hundred thirteen verified signatures, that, that their petition for a pause demanding responsible planning for Waukesha's future. And then there's another one that, that I think has, you know, a couple hundred signatures on it as well. Um, had, I think one of the elements of a, an impact study would be that, looking at that disparate inequable impact on protected student populations per se. And I guess I'm concerned that we cross, cross into an area that we, we might be, um, in noncompliance with, with those expectations. Um, and I, I'd have a hard time voting to, to close Hawthorne at this point without having more, more of an opportunity to at least address that, that complaint adequately before making that recommendation as a school board. They've, and, and related to that, they've actually recommended, as one of the speakers was saying, um, a person that could do the audit of our plan, you know, and what would be the, the impact that might, might be there, um, if indeed we decide on one of the elements of E, you know, what, what the impact would be in, in, as far as, um, those concerns could be addressed in that, in that context. And some of the members of the petition that had seven hundred thirteen, um, signatures has even offered to pay to do that, that study, to, you know, to, to make it, make it, you know, make it available for the district to have it done before making decisions, um, per se. So I, I, you know, I think it's something that really the district should be doing, but they're even offering, offering to pay for it because they think it's, it's that important, you know, and, and I think that's a, a valid concern that, that, you know, before we make, make decisions, we should, you know, at least acknowledge that that is a, a, a real concern that's, that's being raised within the community. And related to that, you know, I, I had proposed a Plan H that's at your desks, and I want, just want to reiterate the fact that Waukesha's not in a crisis mode, you know, with a referendum almost being paid off in April. Um, we can be, and I, I really feel that we should be so proud of our report cards. We haven't had a chance to address that yet tonight, but, um, I'm very, very proud of our report cards and improvements that have been shown in recent test scores. The, the curriculum changes that we've been making are working, and I think that's really a, a, a part of the legacy of this board, are the changes that we have put in place. And my concern is that this plan will, um, not allow this, you know, the, the students to have the neighborhood schools that have helped them to be able to reach those success, success marks. Um, the, my, my concern is that we don't have to make everything happen like now, you know. I, I, as I mentioned, with a hundred-one percent kind of impact component of things, I really think that we can look at this as being a long-range plan. Um, I see us at the end of a, a previous, like fifteen-year long-range plan, with the buildings in place to be able to, um, sell Saratoga and Harvey Phillip. We didn't stick any money in them in the last, in the near past. Um, we didn't stick any money into White Rock. We haven't stuck a lot of money into Pleasant Hill. That I think those, the potential sales of those buildings to minimize our footprint are truly the last phases of what, what has been, you know, on the books for a long, long time, um, with, with that plan in, in place. And I'm thinking that if we, you know, can start with Plan H as a kind of a, a step forward in that direction, it would give us time to, um, think through, if we do an impact study or just on our own, really think through the costs of the changes that need to be made, et cetera, you know, give, um, Horning at least a year to accept the fact that, that we're consolidating down to two middle schools, some of these kinds of ideas that we could start with, um, the Plan H elements there of K six-eight STEM moving over to Horning. Um, I would recommend that we maintain four elementary dual-language sites at this year, and try like a hub busing to balance class sizes, and try to, you know, get that to a reasonable level before we decide which schools might be the best ones to be able to take over, you know, like have, then phasing it down to three, you know, per, per se. Um, we could relocate East High School and the Waukesha Transition Academy to available space at Les Paul, Butler, or North, you know, and then make the, those three buildings, um, available, you know, those, and the Saratoga complex, the, actually, four buildings plus the Saratoga complex, to be able to minimize our footpoint, footprint as step one into our next ten-year plan. You know, I don't think we have to approve all of it like tonight to go into effect for the next school year, because that, that's really a, a lot of, you know, it, it's saying we have an immediate huge problem that we have to be addressing, and I think it's really a two percent a year kind of problem that keeps, that, that keeps kicking into, into effect, um, that we can, you know, make some of these next, next steps in terms of cuts and closures, you know, with, with time to be able to look at the, the pros and cons, et cetera, of that process.
Can you, um, explain what you mean by hub busing?
Hub busing would mean, we, we've got our buses already in place, you know, taking the kids to their neighborhood school, and then, it, I, this isn't my idea. It's, it's just one I had heard of during the, um, the July, July sessions. Then have, um, at, what students would be overflowed to make like one section possible at, say Hawthorne, that those extra kids, instead of having a, a supersized class, could go to Banting, or could go to, you know, Bethesda, whatever schools are, are offering dual-language. And then, you know, they would, they would go over there during the school day, come back before the evening, and, and the, the end of school day, distributions would happen, when the busing would happen at that point. So it'd just be a matter of, like, equalizing the, the, you know, like, we need this many kids over at Banting to get the right number of sections going. We need this many kids, you know, here to get them together, you know, like, just having, letting the committee that we have in place now, without D being, you know, at, at the lead of that program, to look at the kind of, you know, options that are available to do that, you know, and make the decisions about which, which schools are the strongest and, and the most able to, to maybe bring it down to three, you know, with, with their input, with their chance to market, et cetera, along the way in that process. Does that make sense, as far as the answer for the, the hub busing concept?
I, I understand what you're saying, yes. Um, I think Mr. Zenobia has a question, or, or do you have more?
Well, I, I just want to propose Plan H as a way that we could phase into this, you know, without making all these decisions like immediately for next school year.
Uh-huh.
Are you making an official motion, or just putting forth for consideration?
You know, is that what I mean to do to make, you know, to, to make a motion to, to consider Plan H to minimize the interruption of student learning? You know, again, seeing the, the amazing report cards, and knowing that, you know, we have a lot of great things going on right now. And I, I just have a real hard time with saying we're gonna close a school that's doing as well as they are at serving four hundred, five hundred kids, you know, just because we have, we want to minimize our footprint. You know, I think we have to focus on, um, more than seat reduction and, and more than, than space utilization, and realize that, you know, the special needs kids need more space to be able to serve effectively, and that number grows every year. You know, that I, I hate to see us close down some of the schools that make it possible to have some of those learning spaces available in, in, you know, in the near future. So I guess I will. I'll make a motion to, to, to consider, um, the Plan, Plan H to minimize the interruption of student learning, you know, with the, the steps to this process for next school year, and then obviously looking at, you know, the details of Plan E, and, and how that can be rolled out over a long-range, long-range plan.
Kind of parliamentary procedure, please?
I'm trying, yes.
There's a motion. I don't think someone should be arguing for the motion.
That's fair. I think we've had an opportunity to discuss it, but, um, so there is a motion to consider Plan H. Be looking for a second?
For the sake of considering, continuing discussion, I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Brooks. Um, okay, so we have an active motion on the table. Um, did you, Mr. Zenobia had a question. Um, is it germane to this particular motion?
It is not, no.
Okay, then we have to hold that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is pertaining to that. So I just want to try and get a little bit of clarification on Plan H. You, the first three notations are where you wish the plan to start with. So six to eight STEM to Horning, keeping Whittier as the other STEM, and then maintain the four elementary dual-language sites with the hub busing to balance the class sizes. And with the hub busing, it's meant to, if I'm understanding this correctly, taking students from, say, Bethesda to balance out, um, you know, another school that may not have enough students that day?
Hmm, to be able to have a complete section.
Okay, so you're still, so you're...
Like, more of the balancing kind of idea that, you know, if there's enough, when, when you look at the total number, and to be able to divide it by, you know, the number of students that should be in each class?
Okay.
And then be able to try to bring them together.
So you, okay, so you may take some students that day to a different school to learn at that facility?
Right.
For the day?
They'd still be considered like at their homeschool, but, you know, for, for the school year, you know, that they, to be able to have third grade, you know, it might be at a different, different location to be able to have the efficiency of the, of the, um...
Okay, yeah. And then the third one was relocate East High School and Waukesha Transition Academy to available spaces at Les Paul, Butler, or North. So taking the East High School students and possibly putting them in with students at Les Paul, Butler, and North, or, or North. Okay.
Right. Again, helping to, to get the, to better utilize the full spaces that are available at some of those other schools.
Okay. Great. I just wanted to clarify that, because I, I'm not sure if everyone specifically know that those were the first three steps that you, you were hoping to start with. Okay.
Uh, I think Mr. Brooks has a question, and Mrs. Koenig. I have a couple as well.
Yeah, thank you. I, a, as I said earlier, I, the reason why I seconded this motion isn't necessarily because I agree with it, but I think it's, I, I wanted to give folks the opportunity to discuss and debate and ask questions. I didn't want to shut that down once a motion was made. Um, on top of the fact that this plan doesn't begin to even address the, the real demographic challenges of declining enrollment, I have deep, deep concerns, and I've mentioned these in the past, about moving our East and WTA kids into especially a high school setting where many of them have not been successful. That's why they're at East. When I spoke with, um, Sue Poppy, the principal at East over the summer about, you know, what would be the worst-case scenario for your kids as, as pertains to optimizing our future, first words immediately out of her mouth were putting them back into a high school. Um, she, she told me that she would expect to lose half of the, the students at East who are, who are thriving, and we see these kids who are otherwise struggling in our, in our traditional high school settings, who go to East, and it is a lifeline. It is a last chance for a lot of these kids to find success in our school system. And I think it is a real gem of our district that, uh, frankly, I, I wish we highlighted more, because I think it, it is one of the things that we do incredibly well in, in redefining what alternative education looks like. So I, I would oppose it on that alone, just because I, I feel strongly about East being in its own contained space to the best that we can. Um, I, I know you mentioned earlier kind of questioning about the, the funding and getting us over the top, you know, getting us through open and, or the declining enrollment. I just, I, I want to be clear. We're, there's no getting through decline. This isn't a phase. This isn't something that's going to just blow over in a couple of years. I mean, we are expected, the, the Department of Administration estimates that Wisconsin will lose two hundred thousand total people in Wisconsin by 2050. That's not school population, that's everybody. We're an aging state with a declining birth rate. We've lost about fifty-three thousand kids in K-12 schools over the last decade just because of declining birth rates. The previous statewide graduating senior class was sixty-seven thousand kids. The first grade class last year statewide was fifty-two thousand kids. It's a fifteen thousand student drop-off just between twelfth grade and first grade in the previous school year. So I, I, I want to make that point just because I, the, this isn't something that's just going to, oh, we gotta get through it for a couple of years. This is the reality of K-12 education in our state. There are not enough kids to fill the physical buildings that, not just, that we have here in Waukesha, but across the state. We built our school districts for a time when we were growing in population, and that's just not the reality anymore. And so I, I just want to make that, to, to put in context how this isn't just a Waukesha problem, but a statewide and frankly national problem. But this isn't just, oh, it's, you know, it's easy to say, oh, two percent, that's not a lot. Two percent in a, in a district like Waukesha is a lot of students each year, and when that is a, a consistent rolling average over the course of, you know, the next ten years, I mean, we saw the, the numbers on how the, the cost to maintain the status quo. If we do nothing, which is effectively what this plan is asking us to do, we will be costing taxpayers thirty million dollars over the next, what was it, ten years, to have the footprint of the seventh largest district in Wisconsin and the enrollment of Albrook. I, I just think that's wholly irresponsible to our taxpayers, and it's wholly irresponsible. I, I don't see how we do this plan without also going to a referendum, and I, I don't want to speak for everybody at the board. I will not vote for a referendum. I'm not going to ask people to raise their taxes to fund half-empty buildings because the families that that does impact directly the most are our families of, you know, lower means and lower income. They're gonna be the ones that feel that hurt most. And so I, I think that's just irresponsible to ask our, our taxpayers to, to do that. Not saying that that's what you're directly asking for in this plan, but I think that would be the result if we went with something like H is, there's no way that we do H without having to ask taxpayers for more money in, in the near future.
I see it as being a step one, and then like the next year, we would implement E.
I think we have to let Mrs... Do you want a response, or?
Don't worry about it, sir.
It wasn't a question. Um, Mrs. Koenig was next.
Okay, uh, thank you. I, I just want to, um, just I have a quick question about...
Um, can you put your microphone on, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, I have just a, I want a clarification also like Ms. Crenn did, but I just want to agree with, uh, Mr. Brooks, with, um, the East High School and WTA. My current position, for my job, my career, I work with East High School and Transition Academy students. Um, that was set up for that reason, like, like Mr. Brooks mentioned. They need their own space because this is a last chance. A lot of them do have a, a ban, a ban, and, you know, different things. To put them back in that situation would be extremely detrimental, and so I don't think I would be able to also move forward with any plan like that. But I just want to make sure I'm, I'm, I think I missed something. So earlier when you mentioned just moving the six-eight STEM to Horning, um, in a phase, I, then would the rest of the students from Horning still be there? So they would have their own little school within?
Within the school.
A big school?
Like, like Sells does.
Okay. Okay. But eventually, we would set it up for that, but then, the next year, they would be gone, and they would be split between the two other schools, and then...
I was gonna say, that, that would be E being implemented, but not for next year, but it'd be, you know, give us a year to be able to work out the details of how that could work, and the warning for them.
Okay.
And Horning doesn't have any idea about what's coming, which...
I, I think they do. I think, I, I've, yeah, it's been conversation. It was brought up, I think, at the last whole group meeting. I, I think there's definitely, you know, it, it's out there. Um, my other ques... So, so then if there needed to be renovations like, you know, bathrooms and those kinds of things in Horning, that would just be done while school year's going on? I mean, with, in the midst of like, you know, all of the students being there, the, the six-eight STEM and the Horning students, in the middle of that, they would be trying to renovate for the next year's welcoming of the K-four or K, you know, five, or with that? So that would be happening simultaneously while the...
Or summer.
Okay. Um, my other question would be the, I'm, I'm really having my, a hard time wrapping my head around, um, the idea of what's called the hub busing. So we're taking students from a different dual-language program, and we're sending them to Hawthorne to populate that dual-language program because there's not enough students, or to balance out, because, you know, for every model language, you need a, a dual-language classroom. So my, am I understanding, what I think I'm hearing, is that we would be moving, transporting students from different dual-language schools to Hawthorne to spend the day there, and then they would just go back home?
Back to the homeschool before the end of the school day.
Okay, and, and... Okay, and, and, and like, okay, yeah, I guess I did understand it. I just thought maybe I missed something. Dr. Seibert, just a follow-up. Is, is, if, it sounds like, again, like Mr. Brooks said, this is very minimal of, of much of anything. When it comes to, it's almost like doing little to nothing. Is that, how long can we sustain doing that before, I mean, before we get into a situation? I know we're not in crisis mode, but I feel like this is definitely not doing something at all. So like what?
Yep, so Mrs. Koenig, I just need, well, we haven't done it yet. So I just need to clarify that when we have the active motion on the table, it needs to be discussion among the board members. And so if there's, I think there was a very specific question, but, but it's, it's more general. So I think at this point, unless another board member wants to address that, I would recommend that we don't refer to administration at this point. Does any, anyone else want to address that? If not, I have a couple of questions. Were you going to respond to that, or?
To, to the motion, I wanted to speak to the motion. Are you going to speak to Mrs. Koenig?
No, I'm not, but I do want to just ask a couple clarifying questions if I could, and then I'll, I'll give it back to you. There was a speaker this evening that referenced Plan H, and I am just curious, Mrs. Voight, has this plan been socialized with the community?
Just, I had mentioned to some, some friends of mine that were part of Sophia to pray for me because I was presenting a plan tonight that I was calling Plan H.
It sounded like there was advocacy for Plan H, was what we heard from one of the speakers.
I was asking them to, you know, to, to pray for me because I was presenting a Plan H.
Understood. Have you socialized a plan with administration at all? Has there been any discussion about the, all the analysis and the cost savings and anything that they've done for the other seven plans that we had?
When I had stopped on Monday to speak with, with Dr. Seibert, he'd said that if I wanted to have a Plan H, I needed to present it. So that's why I, I put it, put it together yesterday to be able to present.
Okay, and has any other board member seen it beside, before tonight?
I had sent it to you this morning.
Other than me? Yeah?
No.
This morning?
No.
Okay. So with this plan, would, would you be proposing to do an, an equity impact assessment to determine if the hub busing applies to certain populations of students or others? Or how, how would you, how would you decide that that would be appropriate?
It would totally be the committee that has been put in place to replace D, making, making the decisions for the, the dual-language program. You know, like for them to, you know, they're, they're, as, as Betty was saying, in the trenches and understand like what it's all about, and let them make the determinations about how, how it could work as, as a committee to be able to look at the feasibility of, you know, if, if that hub, hub busing could work. You know, again, this is a suggestion that had come up, and I don't know the feasibility of it either, but it'd be let them determine how to, where to cut to, to three, you know, which would be the most logical sites to do that, you know, or, and/or send them to a new location. You know, again, they, they have the, the insights that we don't have.
Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Bob?
Yes, thank you. So, I'm trying to think where to start here. There are some dangerous, there are some dangerous things being forwarded here, and for dangerous reasons, I believe. First of all, the idea that we are a district not in crisis may be true, but the reality is, if we continue to take that kind of a mindset and we keep kicking the can down the road, we're going to find ourselves in one. And the whole point of us taking on this endeavor, when we did, was to position ourselves to be able to deal with the financial strains that we're finding, we're finding ourselves in, in this district. An even more dangerous concept to me is the idea that the sale of buildings, that we don't even know when they're going to occur, is somehow a solution to a long-term budgetary issue. So when we put forward a proposal that may save us $3.5 million, we save that every year, that we have that in place. A sale of a building for a million and a half dollars is one-time money. That is not a budget solution. I, I, I sell a, I sell a car and I get $5,000. That doesn't solve my problem that I may have paying off my mortgage every month. It's a one-time infusion. It is not a budget solution. I'm also terrified by the idea that what we're being asked to consider is not closing, some of the schools on this list, I don't know if it's all of them or not, but the rationale is we're getting great report card grades on these schools that would almost seem to imply that the suggestion is we should be looking at closing schools that have our worst report card scores. Now, that may not have been the intention, but that's the logic that I, I carry that through. The report card scores tell us something about the performance of the, of the teachers in that building, the performance of the students, the quality of our curriculum, and there are probably a lot of other things. But what it doesn't tell us is whether it makes a good economical decision to decide whether to close that one or another one. And we need to avoid talking about the, the, the report card scores as a basis for school closure, whether it's for this proposal or any other. And the final thing, and the irony that I find, is the proposal, so I think Mr. Brooks did a great job of talking about why putting East and WTA in North is a bad idea. We've heard that directly from the principal. But the irony of proposing that East goes into the middle schools when we heard overwhelmingly from our constituents during the information gathering process that they don't want middle-school kids in with high-school kids. And it's one of the reasons that we have chosen not to take that up is because we want to evaluate that more closely. But now we're going to take kids from East and put them in one of our middle schools, to me, is an indication that there really isn't a lot of listening to the constituents going on. I worry that what's being listened to are people at Sophia.
Are there any other comments? Mrs. Kren and then Mr. Zenobia.
And just to piggyback on the idea of East going into a Les Paul, Butler, or a North, I wanted just to note that we're asking places that have a dual-language site, these middle schools or these elementary schools, to disrupt these children throughout the day, to take them, put them in another school, when the whole goal is that they don't want their schools closed so everyone can stay together. So I have a really hard time with the hub busing aspect of, of this plan as well.
Mr. Zenobia?
Thank you. So, I, I mean, I want to be in support of a Plan H regardless of any, any board member bringing it forward, just because I don't feel that any new plan, if you will, and I don't, I don't think this is a completely new plan. There's a couple aspects that, that are, I think the, the busing is the most problematic. I mean, we just, there's no way to vet it. We heard earlier that we don't fully understand our busing until we start to make some real changes here. Whereas, we're just not going to know that. So we can't vet this plan, but, and, and obviously I wouldn't support or vote for it. I think if anything is to, to be motioned, maybe amendments to those would be easier to work this evening than, than this. But I will also say, I certainly, I feel where you're coming from, Ms. Voight. I really do. I, you know, some people say you wear your heart on your sleeve. I think you wear empathy on your sleeve, and I think we all feel that. I really do. We are all empathetic to this, this decision and how it's going to impact so many families in the district. And, you know, my short experience on the board has been, you know, the Hadfield-Whittier closure, which at the end of the day, it was not an easy decision. And, you know, to be honest, I didn't feel 100% confident in it either way it went. And I say that because I, I think whatever happens here tonight, we're not going to feel that way because it's such a hard decision. But I think the plans that we do have before us and, and the other discussion that we'll have will bring us a lot of consideration for all the things that we're, we're discussing. So, I mean, I do appreciate where it comes from, but I certainly couldn't support it tonight, so.
I think if there aren't any other questions, we do have an action on the table. It doesn't, if we, we can take a vote on this, it doesn't prevent us from considering other ideas, but we also could entertain amendments to this. But I'm not seeing further questions. Mrs. Voight, would you have anything else to say or add to this?
I, I just, just want to say that I, we need to keep our focus on student achievement and on students more so than capacity. Because I think the, the capacity concept changes with our growing special needs population. That, you know, as, as I was visiting Bethesda this morning, you know, they were showing how their, their flexibility with their walls have lent itself to, like, when you have a, a larger one section of a dual-language class, they can take the other, you know, they can just move, make the room bigger for them and have some pull-out sections available on the side, et cetera. That, I guess to speak for, you know, the flexibility at Bethesda, which is really let me realize that we have to focus on the students rather than the, whatever we say is building capacity because that can, can and has changed, you know, because of the, you know, need for different kinds of space utility with special needs populations.
I'm not seeing any other comments. So it was standing, or would you take a roll call vote for us, please?
Carrie Kozlowski?
No.
David Watt?
No.
Betty Koenig?
No.
Eric Brooks?
No.
Diane Voight?
Yes.
Natalie Kren?
No.
Anthony Zenobia?
No.
Thomas Harland?
No.
Kelly Piasik?
No. So the motion fails two to seven? One to se, I'm sorry, one to eight?
One to eight.
Wow, it's late. One to eight, okay. Mr. Zenobia?
Thank you. I, I did have a question relating to dual-language before we took a break and before we got into the motion, but it all, you know, we've all been talking about this for a while. So I, it was a comment, I think off of what Mr. Harland said, Dr. Seibert had answered a question about the transitioning of our dual-language schools from, from four to three. And then Mr. Seibert made the com, Dr. Seibert made the comment that he said, and in a couple of years, it could, it could go down to two. And so I know we've, we've spoke about this, we've looked at, you know, can two schools accommodate where we are currently with our enrollment in dual-language? But I, I guess just the point to kind of clarify, regardless of what we do and the schools we choose, for whatever reasons, the dual-language program is, is shrinking, and it's, it, it may stabilize in three schools, it may stabilize in two schools. I think that's fair, correct? And, but that transition's going to continue over the next couple of years, regardless of, of what we do tonight, potentially. So, you know, my question is just understanding maybe from a, a numbers and staffing point of, do we really think it's going to be two years? Do we, do we have a good sense of that? How quickly will these transitions take place? And on current projections of, of where we are and what we've been discussing?
When we originally presented and we did look at the numbers, it, it would fit in two. So in the upper grades, it would be tight. So I think when you're looking at the younger grades, definitely kindergarten, first grade, and as they roll up, fitting into two sites, that would be assuming four sections across the district. So we would just have to see if we go down to three again when they redevelop the boundaries to see what students choose and what enrollment looks like to make that determination.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Watt?
Yes, thank you. So now I, I'd like to turn my attention to boundary maps, if I could. I, I don't know if this question's answerable, but I think it would be a critical data point, if it could be. So as people have correctly characterized, we're, we're looking at a big choice between whether we keep Lowell or we keep Bethesda. I'm curious if in the running of the different boundary maps, depending on which of those options we adopt, if they, if there has been any attempt to identify the percentage of students that would be redistricted into a new school under each plan. So do we know like which plan will drive more change or transitions for students that may not be students at any of the schools that we're considering closing? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, I, I think I can take a stab at it. So depending on which option you're looking at, the boundaries are a bit different, of course, because of the different schools. And so regardless, when we're looking at reducing the number of elementary schools down to nine, to nine, there are going to be shifts throughout our system. When we looked at just preliminary numbers in both E1 and E2, it's about 50% of students would not continue at the school they currently are right now, plus or minus school choice and other things that would be in, in place. But it's about 50% similarly for each plan.
Regardless of the plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Koenig?
I just had a question to follow up. I think, I don't know if it was Mr. Clark was mentioning, or it was David Watt asked the question. So when it comes to, like, going back to Bethesda and the internal, you know, loss of space with putting up walls. So at this point, I know that one of the, the things that Bethesda embraces most is that open concept. So there wouldn't be a need to do as much as like maybe other people would like to see done, like walls put up, doors on. If they wanted to choose outside doors, maybe some, you know, internal lockings, you know, off the library, I think it was number two, phase two, or like level two?
Yeah.
That would be fine with the integrity of, of the school and safety if they wanted to keep that open concept. Because I know one of the things is that they do embrace is that, that setup. So if we're coming in and saying, well, we want Bethesda to have walls, and we want Bethesda to have a door on each, you know, that's kind of changing the internal structure of what they embrace and what it makes it unique in their, you know, in their perspective soul. If they just wanted to do either stay the same or do the, maybe the, the second level, that would be fine. There's nothing that mandates a, a level three kind of a change, would there be?
No, no, you're correct.
Okay. I signed a clar, I made sure I understood that. Thank you.
So maybe just, I'll take a moment to try to reground us a little bit. So when we, when we set out to do this work seven, eight months ago, we agreed on a, a target of addressing our K-8 capacity with the goal of reducing that capacity by 10 to 15%. And we talked about wanting to do that in ways that we didn't have to keep coming back and changing things, and we spent a lot of time talking about the transitions, the number of transitions that students would be experiencing. In order to do some of this work where we have currently 12 elementary schools and we need only nine, and to not have to keep coming back to closing one or closing another, we, we do have to address the boundaries district-wide. And that's something that has been part of the conversation from the beginning. So I don't think that's new information, but of course, that does affect more students in the district and families in the district than simply the ones who attend those schools. I think that's important. I think if I look back to where, where we were a few years ago, the work that we've done on curriculum and Mr. Zenobia referred back to when we had to make the very difficult decision around Whittier and Hadfield, and with the exception of maybe one board member, we had, you know, to do similar work, or similar work was done prior to this board on the, the Blair end. But we were talking about closing a school and redistributing those students. And so the concept of impact to the students who were in that school and then disruption was very localized to that particular school. What we've done since then, which I think is a testament to why we're in a better position to do that now, was the, the synthesizing of curriculum, the, the commonizing curriculum, the very high-quality curriculum. I think what we've seen with our forward exam scores, we'll talk about later tonight, and what we've seen with the, the district report cards, with a, which I think for many of our school populations is largely reflected in the growth that we are seeing for our students, has been extremely positive. The, the proficiency numbers that we're seeing for our third and fourth graders right now... The, the proficiency numbers that we're seeing for our third and fourth graders right now in literacy and math is exceptional. And I think that the curriculum that we have in place, in addition to excellent educators, is really what is causing that. I did some work, we actually had a constituent in the beginning of the process who had reached out about the equity audits and shared some resources with us, and I, I attempted to learn a lot about what was involved in that process. There was a paper that was shared with us that actually reflected on what, what is really being evaluated in those audits, and it really, it was a simple equation that, that equity and teacher quality plus programmatic equity equals achievement equity. And I don't think there's anyone here who's arguing that we have exceptional programs that are available to all of our students. We have a great choice opportunity within the district, but we have the best curriculum money can buy in all of our elementary schools. And so, whatever elementary school you go to, you are going to have access to that excellent curriculum. The other thing is, we know we have phenomenal educators, and we know that those people, when they're wrapping themselves around our students, plus our great curriculum, is really what's leading to that achievement piece. So, when we look at, when we look at school report cards, and Mr. Watt several months ago did a really nice job for us in kind of pointing out that the, the score for any particular school is not an apples-to-apples score. There are, there are weights applied to some of the demographic factors of those schools. And whether or not that's appropriate, it is very difficult to say this school got this score and this school got that score, and therefore, one is better than the other. I think what we've seen in nearly all of our schools was an improvement in those scores that was the result of, to a large degree, either the achievement, overall achievement or the individual growth of those students. So, what makes this decision even more difficult is that where we need nine schools and we have 12, and we have consistency in high-quality professional educators, high-quality curriculum, and it's not a question of like, well, is that going to make a difference? We, we have it, we have the data now that tells us that this is actually making a difference. And so, I think something that Mrs. Koenig said earlier is, when, when we as adults can create an environment for our students that says it's going to be okay and change is part of the process of what we're trying to do here, we are going to send those excellent educators to those nine buildings with the same excellent curriculum that we already have. Having had the opportunity to go through several schools and, and just meet and had a couple of kids that actually, you know, shake hands and hi, you know, here's who I am and here's what I'm working on, and we have amazing kids, we have happy environments, we have happy children in our schools, we, and I, I, I don't take for granted for one second the, the extra that our teachers and our aides and our staff puts in to make sure that those environments are happy. So, I think that just further complicates what we are, are trying to do. But the other thing I just wanted to speak to when we started this process is, you know, the, the variations on Plan E that we're looking at tonight don't look the same as the plans that we started with. There's some, there's some similarities, there's some familiar things, but we expected that when we started, right? One of the things that we asked the administration to do, and they did it, and they did, they did it beyond my expectations, was to spend the time with the community, to be transparent, to listen to feedback, and to take that feedback and try to turn it into something better. And we were hopeful that we were going to find better ideas, and, and we did. But I think to Mr. Brooks and other folks' points, like now we've reached the point in the process where we're going to have to make some difficult decisions because we have to move beyond this school versus this school, and we have to come back to what we're able to do as a community because of the great educators and the great resources that we have. So, we spent all the time talking with folks, we talked about, there is this future state because of birth rate, because of where our community, our state is heading, where we are just simply not going to need as much square foot capacity as we do right now. But getting back to some of the deferred maintenance, you know, it, maybe it's a luxury to have two homes, but you don't need two homes. And so, if you have two homes, you have two roofs that you're going to need to replace in, you know, 15 to 25 years. So, we have to look at some of that deferred maintenance, not as, again, this building is better than that building, or this one has more long-term expense than the other, and when, when is it going to come? There are surprises in every building. Every building we have has had a surprise. So, the other challenge is that I think our facilities team has done a very good job of taking care of our buildings, and there was a referendum passed several years ago that put a lot of money into our middle schools that perhaps we don't need all of that square footage right now, but the fact of the matter is that if we need fewer schools, the reality is we have nice schools, and so, we are going to be in a position to have to make a decision potentially to close nice schools. When we start talking about things like safety, security, it's a non-negotiable, right? So, whatever we decide to maintain, we have to maintain the safety and security of those buildings. Building, you know, every building was built in a little different era, a different year, and so, things are looking a little bit different, but, but we do have a responsibility to do, to do that, no matter what buildings we decide to maintain. And then, and again, I'm just trying to summarize some of the things that we've been talking about tonight, but when we, when we talk about this versus that, you know, I, I think some of the challenges that we're facing is, well, you know, I like the parking lot here, but I don't like the playground. I like the, I like the playground over here, but I don't like the parking lot. We have a special ed resource over here, we have a dual-language resource over here. I, I like not having walls, I like having walls, right? I think, just as an observation, one of the things that I struggle with, and this, this is, this is not a statement of my position on this, but I, I see, I see the happy kids thriving, kids high-performing, kids at Bethesda. I see the open concept, and I hear people saying that we embrace it, but I go in there and I see all these walls that are made out of shelves and other things. So, I do, particularly have to kind of ask, are we embracing the open concept or are we kind of, are we managing the open concept? But I think that's actually some, somewhat irrelevant, because if we decide that that's the school that we need to have, or if we decide that Lowell is the school that we need to have, or Harland is the school we need to have, then we make that decision and we make it the right decision, and we make it safe, and we make it effective, and we make it productive for the kids, and we create an environment they can learn in. So, that's what makes it even harder. The last thing I would say that I'm hearing from everybody is, whether it's the parking lot, or the playground, or the dual language, or the deaf and hard-of-hearing services, the thing that's consistent for everybody is we love our teachers, and we love our families, and the families and the community come together and great things happen for these kids. So, I am optimistic that wherever we land with all of this, when our teachers and families come together around our kids with great resources, that they're going to thrive. But we have to, we have to make sure that the things that we're measuring are things that, that are meaningful and that we can respond to and make sure that we're creating environments that everybody can thrive in. And that doesn't help anybody answer any of those questions, but I think it's just a statement to, how did we get here? We implemented a process, we spent a lot of time. I am not in a position right now where I feel that there's any more data that I can be given that would make the decision any easier. And that unfortunately just speaks to the fact that I care deeply about the community, I care deeply about the families and the students that have come to talk to us, but it doesn't make it any easier. But I, I don't believe that there's any more time that's going to allow me any more data that's going to change anything about what we have in front of us right now. So, that's just maybe a, a little bridge while everyone else took a breather. So, what do we want to do next? Other comments or questions? Mr. Brooks?
So, I did have a question just on, we heard a lot of conversation about the traffic around Lowell. I live right there, I drive it every day. When we talk about the potential to add more kids into that school, do we, what, what upgrades, if any, are we anticipating that would be necessary to ensure safety for those kids during pickup and drop-off, and, and what does that look like?
So, I've been working with Lowell on some of those aspects. I know that some signage out front is blinking a little bit more that it's a school zone. I know there's some concern over fast drivers down that road was one aspect. But there is the potential to look in, into what also was done at Whittier, where they opened up the playground and they created a different drive path. So, if you look at the back of Lowell, you have the parking lot on the side, you have the playground, and then you have the lot that goes up by the pickleball courts. So, there is, there is some possible exploration toward the city to see if that could be a viable option of having a fence for the playground when it's a playground and opening it up to potentially have some different options and safer options for drop-off and pickup. They manage it now, and they figure it out, just like all of our schools do, but that's just something that we've thought about.
Mr. Watt?
Yeah, a quick question. Do we, and I don't know if this can be spoken to or not, but I'll ask, do we have any sense for whether or not there is more or less interest within the community for the purchase of either of those buildings? Is there, is there one that we get inquiries about and ones that we don't, or vice versa? Do we think one will be tougher to sell than another?
We haven't had a lot of conversations with either facility. We've had some conversations with some of the departments within the city about a desire to maybe partner with us on a building that's next to a park, which in this city is, several of our buildings are adjacent to city parks, because we used to be a city school district at one time. So, I can't say there's any more or less for one or the other.
Would a partnership with the city be revenue generating?
I, I don't know if it would be revenue, what, what we've talked about, just, and this is very theoretical, right? Even before optimizing our future was a thing, was maybe running summer school programming, wraparound care, and tying it into park and rec programs part of the day and things like that, but nothing that would be a, a major revenue generator, nothing that would be on the scale of our lease with Richardson, for example, that is occupying Pleasant Hill right now. It'd be more of just a utilizing a facility in the betterment of the community, I guess, would be the only output, I think, that would be measurable.
Has anyone contacted us about Bethesda?
I think I had one developer when this conversation started reach out to me, and anyone who's reached out to me during this process, which hasn't been many, I've said we, we're waiting till the decision's made before we venture into any sort of contract. Otherwise, the only thing I've gotten from Bethesda, and actually a citizen mentioned earlier, a cell phone tower company has asked me about a cell tower there, but that, that is not a significant revenue generator either. But, and they're also the kind, they're like developers, they call you hot and heavy for about two weeks, they must get another place, then they disappear for 18 months, and then they call you back. So, I don't know what value that conversation really has either.
Okay, thank you.
So, I had a little information I wanted to share too on the property side of things. You mean, you don't really know what something's worth until somebody actually wants to buy it from you, so it's difficult sometimes to wrap, you know, from, go from an appraisal to, or an, to an assessed value to a sale price. But if we just look back to the transactions that we've had with Carroll University, if we look at other districts that have attempted to sell property or have recently sold property, just to put in context, it's, it's probably unreasonable to assume that any elementary school property at this point in time, when a lot of districts are closing elementary schools, is going to be worth much more than about a million dollars. And I think that's very difficult sometimes for people to wrap their heads around when we look at our property, our personal home property values going up and up and up and up. It's just, it's just a different market. I believe the, the last one in Waukesha County that I might have visibility to was in Brookfield that was sold for about $750,000, so that would have been an El Brook property. So, just to put that in perspective, I think through this process, as we were talking to constituents, there was some misunderstanding about what some of those properties might be worth. The last middle school sale that I saw, which was, be around the La Crosse area, was just a little over $2 million for a middle school about the size of Butler. So, again, I just want to put that in perspective, that this process has never been about selling buildings to close the structural deficit. It's about releasing properties that we don't want to continue to have costs to maintain, that we don't actually need to provide services for our students. So, those property sales really don't amount to things that help us offset our operational costs, which run about $200 million a year. So, just, you know, for perspective. And so, we have to make that tough trade-off between, do we want to continue to maintain at a high standard of safety and quality the buildings that we have, or do we want to put those dollars into staff and other resources around the students? So, just some perspective on the value of the properties. Any other questions or comments for administration? Mrs. Voight?
I'm wondering what other kinds of repurposing situations we can look at to be able to, you know, to not have it a vacant building. You know, I think that was one of the, the concerns that, you know, to have a vacant building like when, you know, for a period of time, that's not good for the, you know, that community, you know, type of resource. One of the things that had come up was the idea of potentially having a, this building originally be a daycare site. You know, and I'm just wondering if, if we look at other repurposing kinds of ideas to have, one of the ideas that came up more recently was that for Lowell to become a district daycare opportunity around, especially the early childhood area of kids, the 3K, 4K kind of situations, and being able to make, offer a daycare as, as a benefit to, to our employees, along with being able to repurpose a building. You know, so, just things like that, that I think we have to, as, as, you know, rather than closing and just having them sit vacant, we should, you know, I would encourage us to be looking at the bigger opportunities of, you know, could we partner with the Park and Rec and be able to have, have some facilities that would be replacing the YMCA that's going out in downtown? You know, we could maybe, you know, some, stop some of the gap of, of that need, you know, by, with some of our building spaces. So, just one of the considerations, I think, I, I'm concerned about closing and having them stand vacant, and really looking for the community to give us ideas about how it can potentially repurpose as much as possible.
If, if you want to, sure.
Sure. So, those are good points, Mrs. Voight. So, some of the initial repurposing obviously would be, if we sold Pleasant Hill, we'd like to find a spot for Richardson, right? If we sell White Rock, we need a place for East and WTA. We have talked about using a building potentially as like a professional development center, right, until we could sell it, right? Instead of, like today, there was no parking here because we had a social worker meeting, right? But we could have that at a school, and we could do e-achieve testing, and we could do a number of different things, summer school in, in a building for a period of time. And we have had some conversations with the city around concepts like what happens when the YMCA leaves, right? And could we partner and could we do things? Those will not be necessarily revenue generating things, but they might be things that would be good for the community in, in that particular instance.
Okay. We could move on. I'm not seeing any. I see Mrs. Voight and Mr. Harland. Mrs. Voight?
I was going to motion to proceed with Option E1 as proposed.
Second.
Okay, let's take a minute to talk about what that means, and then we can have some discussion. So, E1 as presented by the administration this evening is on page five of your packet. E1 is a modification to Option E, which includes keeping, banning higher and Lowell as dual-language elementary schools, and making Horning Middle School the K8 STEM. So, Butler and Les Paul. So Butler and Les Paul would become traditional middle schools. No changes to the high schools at this point. So the building changes would be K8 to Horning, two middle schools, three elementary dual language sites, as I mentioned. Closure purpose or sell Bethesda, closure purpose or sell Hawthorne, closure purpose or sell Whittier, potential sale of Pleasant Hill, Saratoga, Saratoga Complex, and White Rock, where East and WTA would remain minimally through the 26, 27 school year with an estimated budget savings of 3.2 to 3.7 million dollars. 15% seat reduction. Do you have that as a slide by any chance? Do you put that up? Discussion. Mrs. Boyd?
The idea of the 100%, 1% capacity consideration would be my concern. Like making that something that would happen like right away next year, if there could be a phase in to be able to have the capacity at like 90% more realistically, you know, when that time would come, rather than like upfront, like right away for next year.
Mrs. Kozlowski?
So just in response to that, because I think when we took a look and when we started this process with options A through D and we looked at the capacity, we were using the 24, 25 capacity enrollment numbers. We updated it then for the third Friday count, which we ended up overall dropping 2.1%. So continuing knowing with our trend, I think that we will continue to see that drop. But additionally, our schools are meant to operate at 100% capacity. They were built to be full of students. That's why they were built. So I think we need to just keep that in mind. And a couple other things too, you know, I really like the K8 STEM at Horning. And what we've looked at, when you take a look at the data and the trends, is what you see is that in elementary school, that fifth grade, so that fifth to sixth grade jump, you actually see a pretty hefty increase in the STEM enrollment for many reasons. Parents don't want to go to the normal middle schools, right? So you'll see a jump right there in STEM. And additionally, the location of STEM where it's at does open us up to the Peewaqui areas, to the Brookfield areas, where you've got the ability to really tap in. Nor do we know that for the people that are currently in the district to Horning as it stands today, if it's going to be an easier adjustment for them to join STEM. So while I understand Mrs. Boyd's comment, right? Because you look at it 100%, 101%, we know that when we implement this in a year, we are not going to be at 101%. In fact, we will be under 100%. And I think that's, it's just a relative thing, just to keep in mind as we're watching the enrollment pieces.
Mrs. Koenig?
I want to clarify too. So if there were students in the Horning area that decided that they'd like to attend the grade six at STEM, and there is room, of course, that would be an option for them, right? There's no prerequisite, they would be able to join that program at that point?
I think with STEM at Horning, we have greater capacity for growth, which was potentially a limitation with some of the other plans with maybe Summit View and Lowell. But that was the one question. I do think to Mrs. Kozlowski's point, we don't want to make an assumption about what is coming in the next year. But we can kind of see with middle school, right? It's a little different than the kindergarten enrollment or birth rate five years down the road. We know that this 2% continues and it's actually dropping off a little bit further and faster in the elementary to middle than it is the middle to high school. So we kind of see that coming. Mr. Boyd?
Yeah, I agree with what you just said. However, I think it's important to point out that the vast majority of our enrollment decline over the last 11 years has been at Horning. So, and I'm not sure exactly how I think that fits into this equation around STEM, but I think that makes Horning a better fit for this. And I think it will ease some of the pressure on the other middle schools. So just for reference sake, since the end of the 2016 school year, we've lost 535 middle school students in our middle schools over that time. 272 of them have been at Horning, while only 86 have been at Les Paul and only 177 at Butler. That's, like I say, 51% of those students were at Horning, only 16% were at Les Paul. I think what this tells us is that, yes, while the middle schools are a different animal, in particular Horning, for whatever reason, has been a different animal. And I almost feel as though by moving STEM there, we get better use out of that building. And I also think that we're going to see people who may be sending their kids today to Les Paul or to Butler that live in the Horning boundary area, send their kids to STEM. And I think that, I mean, that's a theory, I can't prove it, but I actually think that that probably eases some of that 101% pressure as well.
I can, I mean, add to that, for those who know that I live on the very, 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 very edge of the district on the Peewaqui side, the distance to Horning is the same as the distance to Butler, which is actually very long. So those who reached out complaining about bus rides, tell me all about it. But I do think that that opens up some options district wide. I do understand, actually with Horning, unfortunately, the southernmost parts of the district are challenged. But I think that was also a complaint from some of the folks that were concerned about Horning becoming the in-district school because of access to it. Anything else? Mr. Harland?
I just want to acknowledge, I know this is an incredibly difficult decision that we're going to be voting on ahead of us. And it's difficult to, you know, list a site on a piece of paper, but vast majority of these are going to be a very different looking school once this is implemented with the new boundary maps and the potential move of dual language programming. What people associate with a specific middle school or elementary school may not necessarily hold true once this plan is put in action.
Mr. Brooks?
Just a question for administration. And I might have brought this up several months ago, but for whatever ends up being a result today, I guess, what is, what is the district's approach to working with districts who are going to be seeing a lot of changes, a lot of new students coming in there to help them ease through the process? Obviously, I know we learned a lot of good lessons from the Whittier and Hadfield merger. And Principal Elliott's been phenomenal in kind of managing that when we made that decision or when the board made the decision. I guess, what's our process as a district to help kind of bridge that gap and help make teachers and administrators feel supported throughout any sort of transition?
Are we allowed to?
I need to just clarify. Is there a specific data question that you have or?
Not to this, no. I retract that.
Is there any other board member that wants to respond? Okay, thanks for that consideration. Sorry about that. Mrs. Boyd?
My concern with E1 is the idea of Lowell becoming a dual language site when they have not had the previous experience in that category, which I guess I would prefer E2 with leaving Bethesda, that has had the experience, being able to be involved in that. So I guess I would not, you know, support this one because I am concerned about Lowell not being necessarily as ready to be able to be a solid third school for the dual language program like Bethesda could have been, could be.
Mr. Harland and then Mr. Boyd?
I guess I could speak as to why. To me, Lowell is more centrally located between the two current communities. I think we've heard from a number of constituents that there is a preference to unify at a neutral site. And I feel that E1 with Lowell being that third DL would achieve that goal.
Okay, we do have an active motion on the floor. Mr. Boyd?
Yeah, I'm going to propose an amendment. I'm going to amend, I'm proposing to amend the option by replacing Lowell with Bethesda.
So E2?
Is everything else, is everything else exactly the same between E1 and E2?
Yes.
Okay, so then, we're sure about that because I want to make sure before I, because otherwise I'll just make a, I would make a substitute amendment to substitute all of E2 for all of E1.
Do you want to take a moment to look at that?
Yes. So I guess the amendment then would be to substitute E2 for E1.
Okay, that is allowable, so that is in its entirety. But we know what that means.
It's a motion?
That is a motion.
May I second that motion?
Seconded by Mrs. Boyd. Okay, so we have an amendment. We do have opportunity for discussion and consideration of the amendment. Mrs. Kozlowski?
So it is challenging, as this is, to take a look at what building, and we said this was going to come down to the split between these two. You've got Lowell, which is a beautiful building, ready to move in with significant investment, that we are going to move to a building that personally for me does not meet the standards that we expect our buildings to be. How we got here, why it wasn't rectified, I can't answer any of that, but we're here. The deferred maintenance for Bethesda is $4 million. The investment to bring it up to speed, based on what we think, with no known surprises, is somewhere between 1.8 and 2.5 million because the 1.8 is the internal. It's still 600,000 to 800,000 for doors. And we haven't yet assessed the cost that it's going to take for the grading, the landscape, and a new playground. I think the delta between a cost savings of 3.2 million dollars a year and a five point something million dollar investment is an $8 million swing. And from a financial perspective, I really struggle with this. And where all of this is, everything that we have done, everything that we have built has been to set us up to bubble wrap around our staff and our students with excellent curriculum, excellent training, and the last piece was excellent buildings. And I'm sorry, but I can't stand here in comparison when now you have to take a look at a building and say that Bethesda is that excellent building because it's not. It is widely loved by the people, yes, but it's what's happening in that building that matters far more. And I understand the rationale. I believe wholly in the dual language program. I'm actually pretty passionate about it, and that was the one part for me. And I have yet to hear any argument stand strong enough that says that we can't successfully carry out a dual language program in a central school that has a great building with not. And I also, and I'll finish with, we are moving, and every school is going to be impacted by this change. This isn't just one or the other. So even, it doesn't matter if it's Bethesda, Hawthorne, or Lowell. You are taking those three schools and somehow you are merging them together, which is going to change everything about it. And that is where having and implementing and building strong leadership comes first with the strong teachers and the support systems to wrap around these students and lift up and make this a great community culture and everything that we are all preaching that we have today. So for me, as much as I love, and I don't want to pick a school because I love everything that we're doing, it's very hard for me to say that we are just willing to say, here's $8 million, we'll just figure that out because we don't want to. I just struggle with that.
So I wanted to let you finish, but I do have to ask the folks that are here in the room if you could allow the board to have the conversation. Because I know this is a super emotional topic and people have a lot that they want to offer, but it is very disruptive. And I just want to let people kind of reach their own conclusions and have the discussion here. So I would appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Kozlowski. Mr. Boyd?
Yes, thank you. I'll be honest, I made this motion because I believe this is a discussion we need to have. It doesn't mean that I necessarily support it. I'll be honest, whatever this board ultimately decides, I will support. If we decide to go, if this motion fails and it's Lowell we decide to stay with, I'll vote for Lowell. If this board decides that they want to substitute Bethesda for Lowell, I'll support that as well. Because I think at the end of the day, the differences are not significant enough to say that one makes, the, one is palatable and one is completely unpalatable to accept. So having said that, I can't begin to tell you how difficult this has been for me. I had people asking me as late as 4 o'clock this afternoon if I had any idea what I was going to decide. And I didn't know. And I didn't know when I sat down at this table. There are very compelling arguments to keep Bethesda. There are very compelling arguments to keep Lowell. When it comes to Bethesda, I wholeheartedly believe that that is the best location in the entire district for an elementary school. I do not think there is a better location that you could find for an elementary school. It has a dramatically better drop off and pickup profile than Lowell does. I've driven Grand View at times, numerous times over the years, when Lowell is going through, you know, school starting or ending. And it's a nightmare. And I'm not as worried about child safety and even inconvenience for the parents as I am the people that live in that neighborhood. It is a challenge and it happens at times of the day that a lot of people need to be getting from one place to another. And we have that in other locations through the district, I know. But we would never have it at Bethesda. Bethesda does have a thriving, established dual language program with people who care very deeply about its success. There is now some question about whether or not it has more capacity. That's going to be largely dependent on what we decide in terms of what needs to happen in terms of the walls and so forth within the building. I will just say for the record, I believe that we have an obligation to make the profile, both from a safety and a sound perspective, as close to what we have at other schools as possible. Understanding there are differences that are, you can't change. Hearing that no matter what we do, 50% of the students are going to see some sort of change would suggest that at least 50% of the people who will be redistricted into Lowell, either because it would be a dual, you know, the dual language population from Hawthorne would likely be going there, or a large portion of them, or changes in boundaries. We have an obligation to try to provide something as close to what they have come to expect in their previous school, which isn't to say that I think Bethesda is by definition unsafe. But I do believe its safety profile is different enough that there are parents who would be, that have never been there, who would react like I did the first time I saw it and think, how in the world can we operate a school this way safely? I've come to learn you can, but I still think it's at a cost of confidence for the people who'll be coming there. The sound profile is another piece of that. It's two pieces. I went through yesterday at Bethesda. And then, at the recommendation of one of the residents and, you know, parent of students at Bethesda. who suggested I go to Summit View, I went to Summit View. It's a night-and-day comparison. Yes, they have pods, but Summit View has multiple walls that are, you know, three walls on each room. I walked into rooms and it dampened sound considerably. There's also, it's a far more secure way that they use those doors on the inside and more convenient as well. So I do, what I'm saying here is if we're going to keep it, I don't think we can say we got the capacity that the capacity study says we do if we make those changes. LOL, on the other hand, is a school that does have that consistent sound and safety profile that we see at all the other schools, and we don't have to make a more than $2 million investment in it. It has less deferred maintenance expense. 1.7 million for LOL, while the deferred maintenance at Bethesda is nearly 4 million. It's got a brand-new playground. It's got an established DHH hub. Do I feel confident that we could recreate that elsewhere without skipping a beat? Yes, I do. But the fact of the matter is, we have that expertise and that staff there. There is a monetary value to having the best location with the best drop-off and pickup profile and knowing that if you use Bethesda as your dual-location or dual-language location, you minimize the potential risk to the other dual-language students that would be coming in there as opposed. The question is, if I look at the difference between the cost of Bethesda for improvements plus deferred maintenance at being nearly 6 million and LOL, 1.7 million, and let's just assume we have to do something to ease the drop-off and pickup at LOL if we keep it, that might be a couple thousand, a couple hundred thousand, I don't know. Let's just say it's 2 million. That's a 4 million. The question is, is it worth $4 million for the better location, the better drop-off and pickup, and a mitigation of risk for the dual-language students? Well, to measure that, I think, and each one of the people at this table may put a different value on each one of those things. But for me, I don't think it's worth 4 million. The dual-language, the dual-language expertise that we have at Bethesda and at Hawthorne, coming together in one roof as opposed to other places where we have started from the ground up without the same level of expertise, without the same number of professionals coming into that dual-language program, probably would have presented more risk. I think the risk is mitigated. We also know that our curriculum is outstanding. I've heard that from the dual-language parents at every one of our dual-language sites, saying they think our curriculum is great. Our staff is great. Our curriculum's great. I believe they can be great at LOL. Is there a possibility for hiccups? Of course. There's a possibility for hiccups no matter which direction we go, but I think it is not a $4 million gamble. At the end of the day, I have lingering concerns about, I have lingering concerns about the additional costs we may see around that playground and the costs associated with that, if that can even get fixed. And so at the end of the day, while I did make the motion to put Bethesda on the table instead of LOL, I did it so we could have this discussion, let everyone have a chance to weigh in on it, and then we can make a vote on it by either adopting this one or going back to the original motion, which was E1. So I will be voting against the adoption of E2, but I wanted an opportunity, first of all, for people to discuss it, and I wanted to be able to explain my rationale.
It's super quiet in here. Anybody else? Am I seeing, I'm missing anybody, am I? So most people, I think, acknowledge and understand that status quo is not the answer. I think that's why we're here. Asking a referendum is not the answer. It's a temporary solution. But we do need to make sure that we can optimize our resources, so what I, one of the things that I saw or observed with great empathy was our neighbors in Kettle Moraine had only four elementary schools and had to choose to close one of them that, from a report card perspective, they all exceed expectations, right? If we do our job well, all of our schools will exceed expectations. That just makes it even harder to anticipate what's coming up ahead of us. But it is on us, regardless of the decision, to make sure that safety and quality is maintained. Whatever happens here tonight, a couple of things for me. We cannot have vacant school buildings just sitting on properties throughout the district. That's something that if we need to bridge time before we're able to sell things, you know, I appreciate what was done here with Blair. We had an opportunity to bring 6th graders in here for a year while we were working on Butler. I think it has served well from an administrative perspective. The property values surrounding this building have maintained, if not continued, to outpace the area. So I do understand that that is also a concern regardless of where we are. I can also look at some of our neighboring districts like Peewaqui that have one single campus, and so the idea of neighborhood schools just doesn't even really exist. It doesn't mean we don't value them. We obviously do. But we just need to make sure, and I think that's on us along with administration, to make sure that we don't have buildings sitting vacant that are just reminding us of the declining enrollment problem that we have. I also think that it's probably premature to assume that the city, who has recently implemented a garbage fee, would have the financial means to purchase one of those buildings or to do something with it. So maybe something more collaborative that we need to do. Similar, you know, sadly, we all see that the YMCA that we probably spent a lot of time at is also having to make some tough decisions, so that just adds to the unfortunate situation. But to that, I appreciate what Mr. Wad has said and bringing this discussion forward. And with respect to this particular motion, the challenge is that we have to make an operational and a financial decision, and we have to balance this facts versus feelings. At the end of the day, there will be a motion. There may be resentment. I think what's important, and I would ask this of the board and of the community, that when we make a decision, that it's our decision together, and we move forward and we try to make it the best one that we could. And I would ask the community that if you are angry or frustrated, direct that at us, not at each other, because what we need to do next is remember our mission to serve our children to the greatest extent possible, and that can only happen if we, as neighbors, can work together and wrap all of the arms that we have around them. So it's a very, very difficult thing, but we have to balance that compassion with the fiscal responsibility. And I think, again, the work of the work of ensuring that those new school communities are amazing begins when this decision's made. So I know there's probably more to this. We'll kind of see where we go with this particular amendment. But are there any other comments or questions? Mrs. Koenig?
Thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Wad, your comments. I just want to make a few comments of my own regarding my inability to be able to support this particular option. The most important being the dual-language. I know it sounds, again, it sounds very good on paper to be able to bring two programs together and have them up and functioning by next September. I do have concerns about that. I can't get past the, you know, the idea that we have an established program on the southwest side of Waukesha. Even by moving it a mile, you know, again, you're pulling it, you know, closer to the other three, and you're leaving an entire geographical region, you know, that had something closer is now going to have to travel further. I think the traffic patterns around LOL are very concerning. I've seen them. To add another large population of students into that entire mix could get a little, you know, a little dicey, to say the least. I'm concerned about that aspect of safety. I keep hearing the, you know, $4 million, $8 million budget amount that would have to go into Bethesda. Again, I think those are some people's perceptions of what needed, would need to be done. I think that community should, you know, have a large say in what needs to be done. I mean, we have certain standards, yes, but again, I don't always like the idea of imposing my perception of what I like in a building on another community's building. We're all different. We all see things differently. And, you know, possibly having a group of parents going over and looking at Summit View and seeing what kind of walls they have, how it's different, that may evolve over the next year or two. Maybe they'll want to adopt some of those things. But again, I feel that the price, it's a one-time investment, but yet it's, when it's done, it's done. So it's not like this long-term, every year you're having to pay this additional money. Does it need upgrades for safety concerns? Yes. But again, I can't get past the fact that you have an established, very strong community, thriving school that works for them, and a dual-language program that has been phenomenal to see blossom over the last 13 years. I just, I can't get behind, you know, any kind of option that would just try to uproot that and dissolve what is currently existing, so respectfully, I, that's just where I stand.
Just a point of order.
Yeah.
Can you just clarify so that everyone is clear what it is that we're actually debating right now? We've had two different proposals put on the table.
Yeah, and I did, I heard Mrs. Koenig's comment. So we are, and I think I know what she meant, but we are talking about E2 at this point, which would be keeping Bethesda open. And I think when you said you couldn't get behind it, you were referring to E1, yeah. Yeah, no, thank you. Okay, we do have an active motion still on the table, so is there anyone else that would like to comment? Okay, I'm just going to remind everybody what we're looking at and then what in terms, like, this is an amendment, so we're not making a final decision. We are taking a vote on whether or not we would like E2, which includes keeping Bethesda open, to become the main motion that we could continue to discuss. Like any motion, if the motion fails, we revert to the main motion. If the motion were to pass, we would adopt this as the new motion. And then if we had to, we could talk about reconsideration options, but I think we may not need to, so.
Again, a point of parliamentary procedure, though, or maybe it's a point of order. So if we, if this passes and it's an amendment, but it's a substitute, does that mean we adopt it? Or do we then have to vote on it?
It becomes the main motion, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we would be able to discuss further. And then it is 10:45.
So one more time, can you clarify what we are voting?
Yep, so we're going to do a roll call, and a vote of aye would mean that you would like E2 to be the main proposal, that is, keeping Bethesda open. A vote of no would mean that you want to revert back to E1 as the main motion. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, and we can take our time with the roll call vote. Thank you.
Thomas Harland?
No.
Diane Voight?
Yes.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
No.
David Wad?
No.
Carrie Kozlowski?
No.
Natalie Gren?
No.
Eric Brooks?
No.
Kelly Piasik?
No. So that motion fails 7-2. Okay, let's just take a moment. Are there any further questions? Comments or concerns by anyone? We still have the main motion active on the floor, which is a recommendation to adopt Plan E1. Mrs. Eddinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Thomas Harland?
Aye.
Natalie Gren?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
No.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes 8-1. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Why don't we just take a moment and allow the folks in the audience to decide if they want to stay or leave, and then we can continue with the rest of our business. We're still in session. Sorry. No, we're not. No, we need to finish. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. The motion that passed was E1. Okay. Okay. Could we continue? Or is everybody good? Yeah, let's continue. Okay. All right, we are at the consent agenda portion of the agenda. So Mr. Clark, would you please begin with the gift report for this month?
Sure. Several gifts tonight. St. Luke's Church gave $1,500, and River Glen Christian Church gave $1,200. Both gifts will be used to provide extra educational experience for Hatfield students. West High School received the following gifts. Lisa Fenske gave $2,000 to be used to cover the cost of a system that will, that records track athletes' activity performance during practice and games. An anonymous donor gave $1,080 to be used for two volleyball nets and four volleyball antennas. Another anonymous donor gave $2,089.80 for two volleyball pole pads. The last gift, the School District of Waukesha Avid Program received the following. The Wisconsin Association for College Admission Counseling gave $1,449.80 to be used to help pay for busing for the Avid elective classes' college field trips.
Thank you. That's all wonderful. Your agenda tonight also includes various categories for approval. I'm sorry. Yes?
I'd like to add just a statement of thank you from Hatfield that Mike Elliott had shared with St. Luke's Lutheran Church. Because November is Homeless Awareness Month, in his thank you, he said, "We have the highest homeless population in the School District of Waukesha, even higher than the high schools." Many students need basic items, clothing, shoes, socks. Just awareness.
Thank you. We do have an opportunity for discussion after the consent agenda is presented, so that's probably a more appropriate time if there's something that you wanted to address. And it's an important topic. I don't mean to cut you off. I just want to be, have some fidelity to procedure. Okay, your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have that opportunity. Included in the items for approval this evening are the decisions of the
Seeing none, Mr. Zenobia, will you present the consent agenda for approval, please?
It will be presented by Mrs. Koenig.
Mrs. Koenig, would you present the consent agenda for approval, please?
Thank you. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved two resignations, one retirement, and three new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet. I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded it. Mrs. Voight, is there any further discussion that you would like to have us consider? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Edding, would you take a roll call, please?
David Wad?
Aye.
Thomas Harland?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Natalie Gren?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes 9-0. We will move to the superintendent's report.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Piasik. In the interest of time, we'll simply present the overnight field trip report, and that'll be given by Deputy Superintendent Gennerman.
Tonight, all of our overnight field trips that have recently been approved are for West, so they are definitely on their A-game with approvals. So there is a Future Health Profession Leadership Conference that will be in November. There's wrestling that will be in Wisconsin Dells during the month of December. Another wrestling thing in January, Honor Choir in January, Wrestling for Girls that potentially is a tournament in January. Another wrestling event for JV, that would be the state meet in Wausau, and that would be in January. And then potentially the WIAA State Meet for Wrestling in February. These have all been approved recently.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gennerman. Maybe just one more quick topic. So we talked earlier about the report cards and we heard a lot about the report cards tonight, so they are impressive. And Ms. Gennerman shared the press release with you that she did and tried to really highlight that. As a district, we got a 74.7, which exceeds expectations, and in calculating against, we used to have a KPI around being the best in the top 10. We are the best in the, in the top 10 school districts, so that's something we can be proud of.
And is it just the top 10 or does it go beyond the top 10?
It goes beyond the top 10. I went down ways further.
I'd have noticed that as well, yeah.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's exciting. Well, thank you for all of your support.
Yeah, just to clarify, so we are the top rated of the 10 largest school districts in the state? Is that what I heard?
Yes, and it goes down a little bit farther.
Great.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we will move into our committee reports for this evening. We're going to begin with the Teaching and Learning Committee, which was presented, will be presented by Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held Thursday, November 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM here in the boardroom. We have three discussion information items on our agenda this evening. The first is, our first discussion or information item is potential new course, AP Business with Personal Finance. AP College Board has announced that this new course was being piloted. The committee discussed the possibility of adding AP Business and Personal Finance to our high school course offerings beginning the 2026-2027 school year. The new course is a year-long high school business and personal finance course that aligns closely with the college-level introduction to business course. Students explore entrepreneurship, marketing, finance, accounting, and management through real-world business applications, case studies, and project-based learning. College Board has created a course framework and is currently piloting curriculum in a few schools across the country. A preview of the course framework was shared with the committee. This course would be the first AP Business course offered in the district. It is important to note that this course would not replace the Personal Finance course that is currently required for graduates, beginning with the class of 2028. The team will bring additional information back to the committee in the future. Our next discussion information item is Criminal Justice Curriculum Review. The Criminal Justice Course, a popular social studies elective offered since 2014 and 15, was not included in the 2022 curriculum revision or textbook adoption. With several new teachers now instructing the course, a curriculum review is needed to ensure a consistent and high-quality student experience across the district. The team reviewed course history and enrollment trends and will continue developing shared scope and sequence and reviewing resources to ensure consistent instruction and ongoing positive student experiences across schools. Our final discussion information item is the state assessment results. At the last full board meeting, the, at the last full board meeting, the Teaching and Learning Committee reported on the recently released state assessment data as it pertains to our key performance areas. This additional report focused on summarizing student performance in multiple other areas. Most grades showed growth in math and English language arts, with scores typically exceeding state averages and showing greater growth at grade level than state shifts. Of note is an eighth grade increase of over seven percentage points in math and reading from 2023 to 2024 to 2024 to 2025. Full results are available on the Wisconsin Wise dash Public Portal and in board docs. Madam President, that concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM here in the Blair Administration Building Boardroom.
Thank you, Mrs. Koenig. Any questions or comments? Okay, we can move on to Student Services, presented by Mr. Harland.
Thank you, Madam President. The Student Services Committee meeting was held on November 4th, 2025. There were two action items and three discussion information items. The first action item was the approval of revision to Policy 5530, student use or possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia. This policy is updated to reflect additional items to include prohibited substances and to include look-alike substances. These revisions are recommended. Revisions to Policy 5530, student use or possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia, were approved in committee and added to the consent agenda this evening. Second action item was the approval of revisions to Policy 8420, school safety. This policy has been updated to reflect the crime reporting requirements enacted by legislature and effective for the 2024-2025 school year. The law requires high schools to collect and report incidents as described. The first deadline to report was July 31st, 2025, to which the School District of Waukesha complied. The Department of Public Instruction has provided detailed guidance on the reporting requirements and the scope of the district's obligation to identify, evaluate, and report covered incidents. And the policy title has been modified to well, to more clearly identify the policy as it includes the reporting requirements of the new law. Including the recommended compliance for the state statute, the revisions to Policy 8420, school safety and reporting of crime statistics, were approved in committee and added to the consent agenda for this evening. Our first discussion and information item was the 2024-2025 School Safety Drills Update. Mr. Pat presented the logs of safety drills from the 2425 school year per Wisconsin Statute 118.07. He also reviewed the standard response protocol used within the district, which is part of our Emergency Operations and Crisis Response Plan. The protocol provides a response for our schools to use for critical incidents, to provide consistent, clear, shared language and actions among all students, staff, and first responders. The second item was the role of the homeless liaison, which is Kathy Callahan. She is a social worker and district homeless liaison. She presented information on the legal definition of homelessness, what homelessness looks like within the district, and a family's right to an education under the McKinney-Vento Act, along with current day information on the reported levels of students experiencing homelessness within the district. Our final discussion and information item was the Special Education in Section 504 process. Mr. Pat shared information about special education and Section 504 plans. He explained the district's practices for intervention and evaluation to determine if a student meets the criteria for an IEP, sorry, Individual Education Plan. If an IEP with specialized instruction is not needed, a student may, may be evaluated for a Section 504 plan. Mr. Pat also presented information about the evaluation timeline, historic and current numbers of IEPs, along with Section 504 plans. The Student Services Committee will meet again on Tuesday, December 2nd, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. This completes the Student Services Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Harland. All right, the next committee is Human Resources and Compensation Committee, which will be presented by Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, the HR Compensation Committee approved the 2026-2027 school calendar draft with a September 1st start date. A few dates to consider and take note of is the first day of school will be Tuesday, September 1st. Labor Day is 9/7. School term may commence prior to Labor Day, which is why we're starting on the 1st. And then the last day of school for students will be June 9th, 2027. Last day for, workday for teachers will be June 10th, and all of this information will be able to be found within our website under the resource for calendar. I move to approve the 2026-2027 school calendar draft with the September 1st start date as presented.
Second.
Any discussions? Just to, yeah, Mr. Harland?
I was just going to comment that we also discussed a couple of other variations to the schedule to include looking at starting earlier and finishing earlier. We decided not the summer to take on that new calendar.
I was going to add to that, too. And I, I appreciate Mrs. CD and the administration looking at that as an option. I do think that we have to kind of continue to be aware of that. I know that there's mixed opinions about the starting early part because people don't want to end their summer early, but then I always see the, the early-end envy that happens towards the end of May, early June. We, there's a lot of consistency, obviously, between the public school districts in southeastern Wisconsin, but where I think that inconsistency happens is with the, the private schools who do tend to start a little bit earlier, and we have busing considerations that we have to support the private. So I, I think it's, it's worthy of ongoing consideration, but it might be difficult to jump into it for this next year. Mr. Wad?
Yeah, I just want to point out, like, we did discuss perhaps next spring filing a waiver to see what DPI says so that we can get a sense for whether it's something we could even go forward with. We're going to ensure that that doesn't obligate us to that calendar requesting it, but assuming that it does not, then that, I think, gives us an opportunity to open the discussion and gather feedback, not just from community members, but from our staff. I think, to your point, Dr. Piasik, that, you know, that we would expect mixed results, but if we start seeing an overwhelming preference, I think, for one or the other, I think that will guide us in future calendars, so.
Yeah, I would, I would welcome that input from our community as well. It becomes a, a topic of weekend conversation in many instances. I know one of the strategies for a neighboring district is to add an extra 10 minutes to the school day. I think we already start pretty early, so that becomes a challenge for us as well, but there are a lot of different strategies that we could be looking at to get out early, earlier. Okay, motion is on the table. Any other comments? Okay, Mrs. Edding, would you take the roll call, please?
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Natalie Gren?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
Thomas Harland?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes 9-0.
The next Human Resource Compensation Committee meeting will be Wednesday, December 10th, at 6:00 PM here at the Blair Administration Building. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Koenig. The next committee is Policy and Government Relations, presented by Mr. Wad.
Thank you. The Policy and Government Relations Committee met on Monday, November 10th, 2025. One policy from the Policy and Government Relations Committee was on the consent agenda this evening. That was Policy 0144.5, Board Member Behavior, Communications, and Code of Conduct. It was approved with these two additions. One, it is a general expectation of board members to disclose any actual or perceived conflict of interest. And two, board members must also protect and not disclose records consistent with and governed by the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, which people commonly refer to as FERPA. There was one discussion information item. There was a policy technical correction to Policy 2431, which dealt with interscholastic athletics and district activities. The technical correction was simply removing the word sportsmanship from the sentence regarding behavior expectations as the policy pertains to both athletics and activities expectations. Excuse me. Lastly, there was one government relations discussion information item, and that really led to a discussion of three different items. It centered around activity in the Wisconsin Legislature. With them in session, there have been some education-related bills being considered. Dr. Seibert covered three of them for us. The first was the 2025 State of Wisconsin Assembly Bill 615, which relates to mathematics assessments. This bill is similar to Wisconsin Act 10, or Act 20 for Literacy in that it would require districts to develop and implement an assessment plan. It identifies when districts need to administer screening assessments, and it would require tutoring and mathematics plans for students at risk of not meeting mathematical standards, or mathematics standards. Second piece of legislation we discussed was 2025 State of Wisconsin Assembly Bill 582, which relates to dual enrollment programs. This bill would require the Department of Workforce Development to establish and maintain a portal on the Department of Workforce Development's website dedicated to informing students and families about the state's dual enrollment programs. This bill also specifies that if core general education course credits are transferable under current law, that post-secondary credits earned by a high school pupil under early college credit program or Start College Now program for completion of a core general election, general education course are therefore likely transferable. That was a mouthful. Anyone have any questions on that?
I have just a, any comment and question on that. I did receive, and I think the administration did as well, the summary of dual enrollment programs that WCTC puts out every year, and I think this is available to any other board member who wants to see it. We are lapping by a lot most, all, actually, all other districts in the county with respect to the Dual Enrollment Academy and some of the other things. So just a question for Mrs. Gennerman. What is our cycle, review cycle with, oh, that's for Student Services or TNL that we'll be talking about, the education for employment pieces?
It will be at a TNL, TNL meeting, I believe, next month, where we'll be talking about all of that being updated in the.
Okay, it certainly is a highlight for us, and I think the legislative piece is just,
you know, to make sure that people know what it is, but I think we have an obligation to, to communicate what it is.
Yeah, I think one of the things I would point out here, and I think it's true of the, of the next, it is, the next piece of legislation we'll discuss, we're ahead of the curve on what the legislature is doing. That was the case with mathematics. It certainly is the case with dual enrollment. And the third one, which was 2025 Wisconsin Act 42, is an act that states that by July 1st of 2026, districts must adopt a wireless communication device policy that prohibits pupils from using a wireless communication device other than a school district-issued wireless communications device during instructional time. Exceptions include, in an emergency or perceived threat to a manage-up pupil's health care or if authorized by a teacher for educational purposes. Waukesha does have a cell phone policy that requires students to store cell phones out of sight at the K8 level and to use phone caddies at the high school level during class time, study hall, or other instructional time. The law states that a copy of the policy will have to be submitted annually to the Wisconsin Department of Justice, so we're, we're already ahead of, we don't have to make any changes to our, our policy because we're already in compliance. So on that note, no other legislative updates. Our next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 8th, 2025, here in the boardroom at Blair. And with that, it concludes my report.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, real, real quick, I just want to chime in on the cell phone bill because I, it is one thing that I think in my career, I, probably one of the few, like, one of the biggest issues in education that I've done a complete 180 on. When I, I remember when I was a student teaching, asking-
the curve on what the legislature is doing. That was the case with mathematics. It certainly is the case with dual enrollment. And the third one, which was 2025 Wisconsin Act 42, is an act that states that by July 1 of 2026, districts must adopt a wireless communication device policy that prohibits pupils from using a wireless communication device other than a school-district-issued wireless communications device during instructional time. Exceptions include in an emergency or perceived threat to a manage of a pupil's health care or if authorized by a teacher for educational purposes. Waukesha does have a cell phone policy that requires students to store cell phones out of sight at the K8 level and to use phone caddies at the high school level during class time, study hall, or other instructional time. The law states that a copy of the policy will have to be submitted annually to the Wisconsin Department of Justice. So, we're already ahead, or we don't have to make any changes to our our policy because we're already in compliance. So, on that note, no other legislative updates. Our next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 8, 2025, here in the boardroom at Blair. And with that, it concludes my report.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, real quick, I just want to chime in on the cell phone bill, because it is one thing that I think in my career, probably one of the few, like, one of the biggest issues in education that I've done a complete 180 on. When I remember when I was a student teaching, asking my cooperating teacher about the cell phone policy and what we do in class, and, you know, if kids are on their phone, what do we do? And we would constantly hear, well, if kids are on their phone instead of listening to you, it's because you're not as engaging as their phone, and so you need to be doing something different. And you need to be incorporating technology into your class. And that's not to say that there aren't opportunities to incorporate technology into the classroom, but as we've just learned more about how addictive these, like, big tech algorithms are that are specifically designed to hook children, it doesn't matter how great of a teacher you are, you're not going to be able to compete with an algorithm that is designed by, you know, very, very intelligent people to specifically hook your kid to their device and make them not want to pay attention to anything else, right? So, I'm glad that we've been leading the charge on this here in Waukesha, that we've been ahead of the curve. I'm glad to see that this is going to be mainstreamed across the state.
Mrs. Kozlowski? No? Okay. Okay. Next committee is the Finance and Facilities Committee, presented by Mrs. Kozlowski.
The Finance and Facilities Committee met on Monday, November 10. There were two action items and one discussion item. The first action item was a Pro Healthcare Employee Health Clinic contract. The administration recommended approval of a new three-year contract with Pro Healthcare for the operation of the employee health clinic. The contract calls for an annual increase of fees of 3%, which was the same rate in the prior agreement. The committee approved the contract proposal with Pro Healthcare as I presented, as presented, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wad. Any further questions? Okay, Mrs. Edding, would you take the roll call, please?
Natalie Grant.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Thomas Harland.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes nine zero.
The second action item was the We Energies easement. The administration recommended approval of a modification to the exhibit on Page 5, the blue line of the North High School Drainage Project Related Easement that the Board of Education originally approved in March. The original easement has not been recorded yet, so We Energies is simply asking for the modified exhibit to be included in the final easement filing. Since the actual placement of the power line and the related exhibit is different from what was presented and approved in March, the administration is requesting approval of the change. The committee approved the We Energies easement modification, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zenobia. Any questions? Okay, Sue.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Natalie Grant.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Thomas Harland.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes nine zero.
The discussion item this month was the monthly budget report. The administration provided an update on the School District of Waukesha's budget status. The report included Fund 10, the General Fund, and Fund 27. All expenditures are projected to be within approved totals. The next FNF meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 8, 2025, at 5:30 PM in the boardroom. And Dr. Piasik, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozlowski. We'll move to other business. Are there any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items? I would just like to to see if it's timely for the Policy and Government Relations Committee to discuss the new legislative proposals that have been made about regarding school district consolidation, and not not to say that we would engage in that, but I think it would be really important if we could understand that. That is that, is the timing appropriate, or is there a vote that's going to be taken before December?
So, I can't speak to whether or not there will be a vote taken. There is an executive session in the Assembly Education Hearing for tomorrow, but I have not seen anything notice for the Senate, so there would still, even if even if a vote were to occur on the Assembly side, there would still be an opportunity to to discuss or engage or do whatever we want on the Senate side, aside from unless they all of a sudden notice it tomorrow, which you never know.
Okay. Mr. Wad?
Do we think it's important to clarify when when we're speaking of consolidation, what that means in this legislations, especially given what we just voted on? So, perhaps, Mr. Brooks, you can just clarify?
I don't know that we should be doing that here, but it's just there are some new bills that address district operations statewide. And I if if time allows, I would like for the committee to have some discussion about that. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, we don't have a need for executive session tonight, so that would adjourn our meeting for this evening. Thank you.